It was my partner here. It was either going here or to Mr. Smith. Next time I'll pick on Mr. Smith.
Keeps Tammy off of me.
Welcome to Queens County Board Education Meeting for February the 2nd, 2022. Can we stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, valued, and the people who are liberty and justice for all.
Okay, you have the agenda in front of you. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. All those in here say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Okay, 302. You've had a chance to look at the work sessions, closed minutes, meetings. Has everybody had a chance to look at those?
Yes, sir.
Any corrections or approval?
I'm making motion to approve the work session, closed session minute, meeting minutes for January 19th, 2022.
Motion is second. All those in here say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. You've also had a chance to look at January 19th work sessions, open meetings, minutes.
Mr. Smith, I make a motion to approve the work session, open meeting minutes for January 19th, 2022.
Second.
Motion is second. All those in here say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Thank you. We'll go into recognitions.
Good evening. So I'd like to start with the Energizer Bunny. This award is given to the staff member or volunteer who keeps on going. It is sponsored by Baby Financial with Mr. Chip Burningham and Mr. Wayne Humphreys. I don't think they're here this evening, but we thank them. So I'd like to invite up the principal of Centerville Elementary School, Mrs. Teresa Farnow, who has, is actually the nominating person for all three of our awards this evening. And I'd like to also ask that our new February Energizer Bunny come up, which is Ms. Janice Carter. So Mrs. Farnow has some wonderful things to say about you that I'd like to read. Ms. Carter is Centerville Elementary School's daytime custodian. She takes care of 70 staff members and 578 students each day. She receives many deliveries, takes care of primary children's accidents, spills, and other messes, ensures that the cafeteria is cleaned after each lunch shift, and that the classrooms are ready for learning. She does all of this with a smile and with an exuberant amount of energy. She is constantly called on her, on her radio to go here and to go there. She keeps us safe. Mrs. Carter is the epitome of the Energizer Bunny. Just watching her makes me tired. Thank you, Ms. Carter, for your uninduced dedication.
Some people you'd like to bring up from the picture?
Come on.
Alright guys, ready? Here you go. Perfect, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
Our next award is the Shining Star Award. This award recognizes someone in our school system who shines. Our January Shining Star is Kimberly Schultz, three-year-old blended program teacher. If she'll come up right now, enjoy. Mrs. Schultz is Centerville Elementary School's Shining Star. When she started, she built the very successful three-year-old blended program from scratch, and now it is the model for other schools. She does the work of a general educator and a special education teacher all at once. She gracefully and enthusiastically teaches her typical age peers and her special education students each and every day. She also completes all the paperwork required for her general education students and case manages her special education students. Her paperwork is as accurate and effective as her wonderful implementation of best practices and high academic standards for all. Her Centerville Elementary School family and Centerville Elementary School staff are blessed to have her. Thank you, Mrs. Schultz, for your dedication to your students. You truly are a shining star.
Your family?
Yes, I'm gonna take a picture for you. Michelle, will you take a picture?
Ready? Perfect, thank you.
Being in your classroom and reading with your students, and it was amazing. We had so much fun, and you are just an amazing teacher. Well deserved award.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And last but not least, we have the Queen Anne's County Public Schools Spirit Award. This award is given to an individual or group of individuals who embody the spirit of Queen Anne's County Public Schools. Our January Spirit Award winner is Valerie Elliott. Mrs. Val is such a positive person who willingly takes on any task with a smile and a positive attitude. She always has something positive to say to lift someone up when they are down, student or staff. Her smile and enthusiasm will brighten anyone's day. She has also helped a student through her positivity to be the best Centerville Elementary School Cub possible. Thank you, Mrs. Elliott, for your continued spirit that is always uplifting and positive. This award is well deserved.
Thank you.
Well done.
Thank you, Mrs. Farnow.
Yeah, she bogeys.
Thank you all.
Thank you so much. Congratulations.
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 Have a good evening.
Congrats, Janice.
Thank you.
Okay, our next thing is our board involvement. Helen, you want to start us off?
Sure. Looking forward to the next sports season, that's for sure. You know, I was on the panel to help select the design team for the new Board of Education building, and that would be it.
Okay, there's been a lot of chit chat about snow days, and I want to thank all the teachers who sent in recommendations and ideas over the, over email. Lot of good ideas in there and thinking out of the box, and I really appreciate that. I try to respond to everybody, but if I haven't, I either will or I won't. Yep, too much. We met with the commissioners, I guess, a couple of weeks back, our monthly meeting with Dr. Salins. That went well. It's always good to have contact with them. On Mark's note, I'd like to sit there and thank the county for what they do for our roads in Queen Anne's County so we can open up schools. I know it's a tough call sometimes because blowing snow, ice, 900%, you know, we don't have a big municipality, so most of our kids are transported and/or drive, and that's a major concern. I don't envy Mr. Pinder's job on making that call both in the evening and in the morning, but everybody works together and we are going to make sure our students are as safe as possible. So those decisions are made very thoughtfully, and I want to thank Mr. Pinder for that. We've had a little more action than we need this year.
Yes.
But thank you.
So February is Black History Month, and I am looking forward to seeing all the projects that come out of all of our schools. You know, this is a good month to talk with our students, and I look forward to seeing some of what comes from it.
It's been a good basketball season for our, some of our teams. I listen to them every morning at 6 o'clock on the radio, and I hear they're doing a very good job, so let's keep supporting them in all their efforts.
Yes, so we have successfully transitioned between semesters, and I think mostly impacting our high school students is really it's to change. I think everybody's kind of trying to get into their new routine, but I think all is well. I've had an opportunity to start back with my student groups, and they've been very informative. We've been working on strategic planning and getting the student voice as part of that strategic planning in the needs assessment stage of that. So it's been exciting. I always enjoy being in the schools and look forward to two more meetings tomorrow.
Thank you. Ms. Houdak?
So, good evening, Mr. Smith, Dr. Salins, board members, and the rest of the executive team. First of all, I'm glad to be back. I know I was out for the whole entire month of January, so I'm glad to be back. And I want to thank Dr. Salins for covering me with the spotlight in December, and then in January, Ms. Power, Waters covered for me, so thank you for doing that.
Welcome back.
Thank you. It's good to be back. Alright, so for the January Spotlight. It's not moving. Okay, so for our elementary schools, okay, so Bayside, what they did before Christmas break, they sent home art kits for the students, and what the students did was they created art projects. And upon their return after break, the art projects were displayed, they are displayed in their foyer, and each of the students received 10 Bayside bucks, which I'm sure is a part of their PBIS program, for participating and completing a project. So I thought those were really great, and the kids did it on their own at home. Centerville Elementary School, they started Wellness Wednesday, and what they do on Wednesdays is everyone will have three points throughout the day that they stop, and they do some type of mindful, mindfulness breathing or some type of an exercise just for a few minutes, just to keep the students' minds and bodies sharp. So, and then whoever submitted this said, not to mention we get to wear exercise gear on Wednesday, so. And you have pictures there of the students practicing five finger mindfulness breathing and then playing heads, tails, and doing some calisthetics. Churchill Elementary School, they did some public speaking, and the students viewed Dr. Martin Luther King's "I Have a Dream" speech, and then each of the students were given lines, they practiced them, and then they were videotaped doing the speech collectively, like different parts of it, and then looped together. So that was great for those guys. And then there's a video of them doing it as well. Graysonville, they had two third-grade students that created positive posters, and they were displayed and hung in the school for all the students to see. Kennard Elementary School, you have the environmental club. They went around the Centerville, around Kennard, but in the Centerville area, and collected 20 pounds of trash. And then they also have a media group that they were doing research in the bottom picture for an upcoming news clip. And there's some of their equipment up in the top right. Ken Island Elementary, you have a picture on the left. That's the principal, Ms. Cornish. She's working with a kindergarten student, and then in the middle you have students that wrote their thoughts, big thoughts, surrounding Dr. Martin Luther King's big words in his speech. And then you have virtual PD that the teachers participated in on the 24th. Just showing what that looks like, which I think we all knew what that looks like. And then Mattapeak Elementary is surrounding that same topic where you have staff participating in, excuse me, meetings, leadership, committee meetings, and it was also shared that during the snow days, they still got together virtually to plan and collaborate together. Sellersville Elementary School, we have our, Dr. Salins went to, she shakes her head, but she was there, and she, here's a picture of her. She talks about doing it, and here she is, reading to the students and then doing some movement breaks with them. So the pre-K and K students, and I know that's her first love, so she's in her element there. And in our middle schools, we have Centerville, our Centerville Middle, and years ago I was the principal there, and I remember some folks doing these type of projects, and it's called altered books, and it's using different mixed media to do this artwork, and what they do is they take books that have been discarded, and then they create different pieces of art. I think, I think they're, it's very creative, very creative, so. Great that they shared that. And Mattapeak Middle, they are showcasing their Carson Scholarship nominee. Stevensville, you've got seventh graders who are working collaboratively, and they're playing a game called Distributive Property Match, just practicing the skills. Sellersville Middle, so they wrote a grant, they received funds, and from January 10th through the 14th, they brought in what's called the Explorer Lab, which is a STEM lab. Students did some simulations surrounding Mars, and you can see them, the picture on the right, them in the vehicle, working on the projects. So very cool that they were able to bring that. High schools, we have Ken Island High School. You have a world history student doing an analysis of some CIA intelligence from the Cuban Missile Crisis, so working on a project and using data to do that, and then you have winter performing arts. And then Queen Anne's County High School, you have an art student that received the Gold Key Award, and you have our students that are preparing in the dance class for spring dance concerts. And this is a picture of a Centerville Elementary School student. Her artwork was selected for BWI Student Art Exhibit. I know that there was an article and a video put out on this, but congratulations to her. And Ms. Callaway, who was her teacher, Mr. Bell, and you have Dr. Salins there that went to honor her when she received this opportunity for her work to be displayed. So anybody who's traveling, look for the art exhibit and look for our, and there were 23, I believe, choices in the state, and she was one of the 23. So her artwork is right here. So Dr. Salins, I know, did you talk to Ms. Callaway about, like, the project, the art piece?
I did. I actually talked to the student, and she shared with me, and it's in the video of how she created it really through creating the look of texture, even though physically it was flat, but the look of texture, and then why she selected kind of that movement. She said she really likes the trampoline and she likes movement, and she also incorporated colors from Halloween because this project was done over that timeframe. So she really was very thoughtful and quite an artist, as I said in the video, to create this, and actually it was one of 24, and there was only five elementary students selected, and she was one of the five and the only one, obviously, from Queen Anne's County.
Yes, yes. Thank you for sharing that. And our own Michael Bell, which I know a lot of you, I mean, he has presented, and he had the teacher's art exhibit. He is being honored in March in New York City, and he is receiving the Eastern Region Supervision and Administration Art Educator Award. He had four letters, two of which, well, one was MSTE, one was a community member, and two were teachers, and I read each one of them, and some of the things that they wrote about him. I mean, Michael is, he is such a spokesperson, and he has put us out there, and he has shone a light on Queen Anne's County in the area of the arts, so very deserving, and kudos to him for, for getting this honor, so. And we have building updates, and this is Graysonville Elementary School's cafeteria, and those are new tables, so they are here. So get to see the fruit of your decisions. So, and that is it for the spotlight. The highlight of the evening. Yes, so, and to Ms. Harpers, coming about Black History Month, I'm sure that most of the spotlights will capture a lot of those activities that you were referencing for spotlight on February.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move on to student, board member reports.
Yeah, I can start. Good evening, everyone. So as previously mentioned, we recently transitioned to our new semester and schedules at Ken Island, and despite the snow days in the past month, we have been able to complete our final exams and our state testing. We're currently in the midst of our winter sports, and our basketball team just played against Queen Anne's, I think that was boys and girls. The SGA is putting together a Winter Spirit Week, the week of February 20th, February 14th. The blood drive is going to be held through Blood Bank of Delmarva on February 24th. The District Band Festival will be held at Ken Island on February 24th and 25th. And lastly, scheduling just opened up for our underclassmen to start planning for next year's schedule.
Who won the games?
I...
Why are you going there?
I did have to.
We'll maybe ride along.
At Queen Anne's County High School, we have the final semester of first report cards emailed this Friday on February 4th. Starting week February 7th, scheduling will begin for the 2022 and 2023 school year. The last senior portrait day will be held in auditorium on February 10th. You can schedule that online. Spring sports orientation will be held on February 16th from 5:30 to 6:00 p.m. Great opportunity to meet the coaches, and tryouts for the spring sports will begin on March 1st. You must have an updated physical, and you can register that on form, form relief online. Yearbooks are now on sale online, and Class of 2023 will be holding a fundraiser at Barbecue Bueno on Friday, February 25th, from 11:00 to 8:00 in Centerville. If so, feel free, you can go support our junior class. All show band auditions will be on the Saturday, February 5th, and the District Soul Ensemble Festival will be held on February 24th and February 25th at the Ken Island High School. This month, we will introduce, introducing the CTE programs for the ninth and 10th graders. And for sports, indoor track and field, track and field regionals is next Wednesday on February 9th. Wrestling and swimming both have meets tonight. Tomorrow, some swimming has a meet for both boys and girls, and boys bas, no, girls and boys basketball have games.
And just, just for the, for the, can you go over your fundraiser? What's, you mentioned?
Oh, it's the junior class, the Class of 2023 is holding a fundraiser at Barbecue Bueno on Friday, February 25th, from 11:00 to 8:00 in Centerville.
Where's Barbecue Bueno?
Bueno, it's, it's...
Right up the street from...
Yeah, it's right down the street. Mama Mia's, I think it's.
Okay, Mama Mia's. Okay, gotcha. Okay, okay, gotcha. Just so everybody knows, it's just...
Next is Snow Cone Stand, if you know where that is.
That's where I know. I got a granddaughter, two of them. Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Our next thing is citizens' participation public comment.
We ask all speakers to keep in mind the following. Speakers should sign the roster, including their telephone number and address. Comments should be limited to three minutes length. Comments longer than, should be submitted in writing. Questions or statements to the board should relate to matters of general policy over which the board has authority. Comments about actions or statements of individual staff members are not appropriate for public comment and should be referred to the Superintendent of Schools or the Board President. If the speaker has any specific questions, the board will make sure an appropriate staff member responds to his or her question. The board respects everyone's desire and right to convey their message freely, but asks as a courtesy to this board and our citizens to show respect for all. Mr. McNeil.
You state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. Richard McNeil, live out on White Marsh Road, represent the retired school personnel, and Happy New Year. I missed the January 1st for no other reasons. As I start off tonight, I'd like to honor and mention three of our educators who have passed away in the last couple of weeks. Roger Smith, who was here a long time ago. He retired, I think in 83, 84, somewhere in there. Bill Malaski, who was a wonderful teacher down at Stevensville Middle School, and really helped a lot of kids learn how to put things together and so forth. And Mary Ethel Cominges, who just passed the other day. A quick story on that. When I was principal of Centerville Middle, she retired. We hired her the very next year to kind of be the grandmother of our in-school suspension area. She died at the age of 92. She retired the second time in 2020, so you can do the math on how long she was there. So just a wonderful educator and just a wonderful person. Touched probably over 2, 3, 4,000 lives and just made a difference as they all did, they all did. Want to thank the board again for our health insurance program for all of us over 65. We had a little bit of a hiccup. A lot of us didn't get our cards until last week for the prescription cards. But a big shout out to Labor First, who is our advocate for Queen Anne's County and the local counties. They emailed us, who called, a temporary card, so a lot of that, but some anxiety levels went way up with some folks who were trying to do that, but thank you for continuing that. Our December project, to which we had a couple of visitors from the board there, wanted you to know, we collected 123 pairs of mittens or gloves that were distributed at Churchill Elementary and Sellersville Elementary in their after-school program. Kids loved them. Whether they still have them or not, I don't know, but... But again, thanks to that. I just want to say, I know that you're in the budget project, and I know what a time, a tough time that is in terms of funding programs and moving forward on things, and I wish you all well. And I wish you all well as you go forward on that. And our next meeting is March 8th, assuming it doesn't snow. We're going to be right here in Centerville. So good luck to you, everybody. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Nice to see you, sir.
Much. Great to see you.
Do we have anybody else? Is that it, Tammy?
Anyone else like to speak?
Hey, moving on to informational items. 701 COVID update, Dr. Salins and somebody else you've gone on here to help you?
I have. I've asked Michelle, actually, to come up, Michelle Morissette, to share with the board because I wanted to go a little bit more in depth. We've had some questions, obviously, and as things are ever changing, we all know that, that everything is ever changing. So just to get some clarification out there and just kind of to take a little bit deeper dive in that typical data piece. We were used to getting data every single day, as the board knows, and then that ceased. And I've been, I've had a lot of questions about why am I not doing that, going by that data? And we don't have that data. So that's another big reason I asked Michelle to come. So it's not just coming from me. You're hearing it from the horse's mouth. And so, Michelle, thanks for being here tonight. Not literally, you're hearing it from Michelle's mouth, but she knows what I mean. But thanks for being here, Michelle. I really appreciate it.
Because that's a question I've had. You know, we had these on a daily basis, sending us stuff. And you could keep an eye on it.
Right.
Because it's the same information, different numbers every day. And then all of a sudden, they say they're hacked and they can't get back. And you're going to explain this to us?
Yeah, she's going to explain everything. That's why I had her come, yeah.
So everybody knows about the Maryland Department of Health's data breach. So that interrupted our ability to get the daily updates as far as percentages and case rates. So because of that, we still aren't getting that information like we want. So we're relying on our local information with our local health department. And keep in mind, the numbers that I'm going to tell you are only what's reported to the state. So all the home tests that are being done, if they're a positive, if the parent or the individual doesn't report that using the link that was supplied, we don't know about them. So I'm sure the numbers are higher than what I'll let you know because we don't know about all the non-self reporters. So on the 31st, the number of positive cases was 82 in Queen Anne's County. Now, that encompassed the whole weekend plus the Monday. 13 of those individuals were students in Queen Anne's County. 12 of those were our students. So one was a homeschooler or a private school. So that's about 15% of that positive caseload. On the 1st of February, it was 37 positive cases. Again, that doesn't include the home tests that were not reported. 10 of those were students, 8 of those were our students, Queen Anne's County Public School students. So that's 22%. And then today's rate, there were 37 positive cases. Again, 7 of those were students, and all 7 of those students were our students. So that's about 19%. Just since yesterday, the percentage rate for the whole state was 13.8. Today's rate is 8.6, so it is nicely dropping. Hopefully, it continues that trend. Looking at the positive cases every day on each individual school's spreadsheet, I see a marked drop in our cases. And seem to see a pattern where the cases were higher at our southern end. Now that's kind of trickling to the northern end. So hopefully, we're dropping off beautifully and staying that way. The Maryland Department of Health does not know when that link will be up and running again. So our local health department is trying their best with their epidemiologists to stay on top of the information they're getting out of the NEDS network and CRISP. The attendance rates, we are reporting still to Dr. Seeatola of both our students and our staff. It's on a 24-hour lag so that all of our schools have time to get their attendance in. So what the health department does is look at that absentee rate. And if it goes above a certain percent, usually it's 10%, they will usually call and ask what's going on. What are you seeing? Are you seeing stomach virus, hand, foot, mouth, what's going on? So they'll do a deeper dive to make sure that there's not a little epidemic of something going on in a classroom or a grade level or a bus, what have you. So they can make a decision what needs to be done there. Our school nurses, when they do see a spike in numbers in either a certain class or a bus or a grade, they are responsible to report that to the health department so that a case can be opened with MDH as far as an outbreak number. And then the health department will keep an eye on that. If any new cases come up in that cohort, the nurses stay on top of that and report that as well. If nothing happens in a certain amount of time, MDH will report back and advise to close the outbreak. You want me to discuss the off-ramps?
Yes, so I asked Michelle to, you know, Mr. Territory in the state came up with what quote-unquote is called off-ramps. So how can the school district, what factors are there that guide you into whether you can make certain decisions or not about specifically masking? And so I asked Michelle to review each of those off-ramp opportunities and share where we are with each of those and to see and conclude, do we meet any of that criteria? So that the board can, you know, think about that.
Is it still an independent board decision or a state mandate that may have to be warned?
It's a state mandate, but they've given us three off-ramps. And Michelle's going to go through each one of those to see if we meet the criteria.
So currently, the first off-ramp is 80% of our county is vaccinated. And we have not reached that.
What are we at?
I believe Dr. Seeatola said it was in the 30s, like 35, 36%.
Only 35% has been vaccinated?
It's, we're nowhere near that 80%. Now, keep in mind your age groups. So while most of your adults may have been, your kids are still. So that number could change. It just depends on the age group. The second one is specific schools. 80% of staff and students, and that's those who don't have an exemption. They're not included in that number. The hard part about that one is we don't know if they won't tell us. So I do encourage both staff and parents of students to let your school nurse or your administrator know that you have been vaccinated. If we don't know, we don't know how close we are to that 80%. And it's hard to use that as one of the off-ramps if we can't calculate.
And we do have, many of our athletes have been vaccinated, and they'd let their AD know. But if they don't let their nurse know, correct, that it doesn't actually get into the file.
If it doesn't make it into the file, I can't see when I'm pulling numbers if we're meeting that or not.
When in doubt, it needs to go to the school nurse.
Yes.
Okay.
And the school nurse should always know. You get a vaccination for anything, you should always update your school nurse so she knows what you have on board. And then the third is if the superintendent lifts, if we go into that low and moderate for 14 days. And again, we're not getting that information because of MDH's data breach. So that's the hard part about that one. So those are our three off-ramp choices.
So what I'm understanding, the first two things are vaccinated-driven. You've got to have a certain percentage, which a lot of people aren't vaccinated. They might have natural immunity or whatever and had it or something. So that's a personal choice. So the only option we have to lift these things is to get a low enough. And what's that number going to be, five?
Remember the map, and there was color codes, yellow, orange? We have to be in that lower moderate for 14 days.
We can't get that for the county from Dr.?
That came from the state.
Right, but I mean.
We're the governor's office.
Can we not get the number from the state, though? I mean, can we not get the number from the county? Those, can we not do our own?
I would have to ask Dr. Seeatola. They are trying to stay on top of that because some of the systems they have to access to get those cases out of are lagging too. So it's hard to stay on top of the information when you're not getting it the way you're used to getting it.
Hey, just me. I have a hard time figuring out why they can't get this back on track. I mean, we did this for years. We have all this high technology, and we can't track this stuff. All of a sudden, somebody hacks it or something's happened, or the rat unplugged the plug, and we can't figure this out?
So from what I might, from what I understand, it's about their servers were corrupted. So they really need to replace or rebuild their servers. That's a big undertaking for the whole state of Maryland as far as the health department goes.
Well, I mean, you know, I'm not a big mask, anti-mask person. I don't, you know, I want to do what's best for our kids. But when you sit there and say people have to be vaccinated to a certain point, which is personal choice, and then you say the other way out of this mess is to get our numbers to right, and they won't give us the numbers. It's like, Dan, if we do them, Dan, if we don't, you're not going to get to make any decisions. And at some point, we've got to move on with this stuff. I mean, if people want to wear masks, that's fine, but some people don't.
Well, in this 80%, they haven't been specific of that. That they're only zeroing in on like vaccination, but they haven't included those, your positivity rate within so many months. So I don't know if that's something that needs to be brought up, those who made these off-ramps.
Well, I'm still confused about, so the superintendent can make the decision based on our low and moderate for the county, correct?
Yeah.
So why, so if we knew with those, like, we know what low and moderate means, correct? We know those numbers, as in what we're striving for.
No, I don't know what parameters the state was using.
So we can't just use our current positivity rate and knowing what our population is, have our own percentage?
That I would have to direct to Dr. Seeatola.
Yeah.
Because his staff would have to do that.
This week and asked him, and he is tracking it. And said he would touch base with us in two weeks to let us know what his thoughts are and, you know, what his recommendation would be. So we have put it out there. I don't have the data, so I can't share it.
Yeah.
You know, I'm not getting it, but we have put it out there. And he did say, you know, touch back with me in two weeks. Let's have another meeting and, you know, let me share with you my recommendation at that point.
He's just as frustrated not getting his hands on that data. He's used to seeing it every morning so he can make those decisions, but it's very.
And that's why we actually started doing, through Dr. Hibler's department, started giving him our daily attendance by students, our daily attendance by staff, so that he had some data.
Right.
And that's not even, you know, a great data source in one aspect that because if you have a school who has 10%, say it's eight teachers, it's 10% or whatever of their teacher population, he's just getting that raw data, but not all of eight of those teachers are COVID-related.
Right.
So when you start diving down, so we started looking at it, what percentage? And it's really a third or less of the absenteeism that is reported every day. Staff and students is COVID-related, less than, some about a third, but some of them are less than a third. So, you know, and we've been providing that information.
So as far as the staff rate goes, we're about 78% vaccinated. It's your students. We really don't know because parents either don't tell us or won't tell us.
Well, it sounds like we have a great off-ramp available if we could, yes, get some information. Thanks, Michelle.
And I think things are changing too at the state. I think just like this whole pandemic, they're starting to see that we're starting to shift. And I'm not the person to really talk about it, so I'm going to throw it back to Michelle, but.
So at the federal and the state level, the word endemic has been brought out. So when we reach that point, that's when COVID will exist in the world of the flu and strep throat and pink eye and all our other little communicable diseases that our school nurses keep eyes on. And at that point, they would return to doing what they were doing with the other things. You don't feel well, you're going home, you need to see your doctor before you can return. And that word is floating out there at the federal level and the state level. I asked in a meeting two weeks ago if it was being talked about. So it is being talked about at the state level as far as school nursing goes. So it is being considered, and we're hopeful.
I just think we need numbers because the first two options to me, I, I'm not a doctor. I can encourage and recommend, I don't recommend, I encourage. If they want to get vaccinated, but they don't want to do that, it's their personal choice. And I don't think, that should be a metrics of what we do as far as wearing these things. If we don't have a problem, we should not have to wear them. But we should also be able to track this stuff. We track every other thing, and we certainly did a hell of a good job with it nine months ago. And I just, I mean, I'm still, it's not you. It's just I don't understand.
We are all frustrated, yeah.
You know, you're just a messenger. But I mean, I just don't understand why we can't get this, you know, where we can make some good decisions. And you might not like the decisions we make, but at least we can make them with some information.
Yeah, I can tell you the local health department, from what Dr. Seeatola says, they are trying. And he is trying to dedicate some staff to try to figure that out at a local level. But yeah, he wants the information just as badly.
Yeah, I mean, the state must have more than one computer to do this, I would think.
Oh, yeah, yes. It's a server issue.
I understand. Okay, well, any other questions for the board?
I do, just real quick on the desk, because I've seen some little bit of a change in definition of fully vaccinated. What does Maryland Department of Health say is now fully, what do you consider to be fully vaccinated?
The first and second dose, if it's a two-dose series.
Okay.
Or the one from Janssen. The booster, at the CDC level, the booster is not what's deeming you fully vaccinated. The first series is.
Great, thanks. And then the, do we have any kids that are in the hospital?
Currently, I believe they are all out. We had, I believe, max was three. One of those was in ICU stay and has some long-term.
Thank you. Thanks a lot, Michelle, for the information. Very helpful.
Any other questions?
Yeah, you're more welcome to save for us to meet if you'd like to.
You like all time.
Be, I mean, you know, you're used to it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for everything.
Thank you very much.
Okay, our next is school safety update, Lieutenant Neal.
I'm going to grab one of these gun belt chairs.
No arms.
Good evening. How you doing? On behalf of Sheriff Hoffman and the entire staff at the Queen Anne's County Sheriff's Department, we thank you Superintendent Salins and Board of Education Board members for your continued support of our office and for providing opportunity for us to give brief updates for the Sheriff's Resource Unit. Within the last several weeks, the pilot program for DARE was completed and conducted at the Graysonville Elementary School with the second grade. Now, we are moving forward at this time, the next phase of our outreach with this program. Beginning on Friday this week, we will begin to teach DARE to the entire sixth-grade class at the Matta Peak Middle School. It should be noted that feedback received thus far has been very positive from students and staff. And this could not have been achieved without the support from Superintendent Salins and the board members. We appreciate you. Thank you very much. The next topic will be the school bus camera enforcement program. This program is running efficiently. Over the past 60 days, we have received and reviewed 95 citations. We have approved 68 citations, six date, for violations, and 27 were declined for administrative reasons. That's approximately 72% approval rating for citation violations for violating the bus camera equipment violations for state of Maryland.
And is that 30 days, you said, sir?
60.
60 days, thank you.
And keep in mind, this does include the eight days that schools were closed when no citations were generated. So a little less than 60 days, really. We continue to see at times, instances where citizens are traveling near bus stops at high rates of speed while students are crossing the street. We ask everyone, please slow down, pay attention, and stop to permit our students to safely enter and exit buses. It's very important. Our office continues to provide and maintain a comprehensive security operations response plan daily to ensure the safety and welfare of all students, faculty, and staff within all Board of Education properties. And we take these responsibilities very seriously. We are very fortunate to live, work, and play in one of the safest counties in the state of Maryland. In closing, I'd like to thank again Superintendent Salins and the Board of Education Board members for your continued support and cooperation with our staff. We appreciate all of you and the excellent working relationships we have together. That is all I have. Any questions?
Yes, sir, have we, is there a pattern on these certain speeding times and places?
I don't have the information today, but I can certainly provide that to you.
No, no, I don't want it. I was just wondering if you would provide maybe a sheriff, deputy sheriff's car in that area during those times and in those areas to try and stop some of this.
We do use the information we receive from the bus patrol vendor for these citations. We also deploy our speed trailers. They're electronic equipment where we can deploy them, and they provide data to us, you know, map trends of certain locations.
We have one on Kentmore Road. Yes, I remember very well.
They're a very, very great resource for us as well. So we use a lot of different sources of information to deploy our resources appropriately to enforce.
Thank you.
Do you feel these cameras are making a difference and people getting the message that they, you know, you've got to be careful around school buses?
Absolutely. I think it is a great resource and.
I mean, we hear these numbers. Are they going this way, I hope? Are they going this way, I hope? I mean, they're coming down from four months ago, maybe?
They are. I, I think in the beginning of the program, because it was new and, and the citizenry were not really aware, maybe not, or they just weren't used to having these cameras on the buses. I think in the beginning, it was really high, more citations being generated because it was a new program. But I think the word's getting out now, and, and everyone understands that all the buses have this equipment. And just because there's, there's a camera there, doesn't mean you, you know, you need to stop. You know, if even, if there was no camera there, you should stop anyway.
Right.
So I, I think that these cameras are an excellent, excellent tool to curb those violations.
Come on, that's the biggest thing. I mean, I'd love you to come here one time and tell us you had zero.
I would too.
Right. Exactly.
That's the endgame.
I would too.
What's the amount of the fine for that?
I'm sorry?
You know the amount of the fine for that?
The amount of time that...
The fine.
Oh, the fines, I'm sorry. It's $250.
How much $250?
$250 per violation.
Right. And are there recurring violations, do you know, like?
I am not aware of any currently. I don't have that data in front of me, but I'm not, I'm not particularly aware of any repeat of that.
It's a pretty good incentive, $250.
It is. We haven't, we haven't gone to court yet, because COVID and the courts have, operations have ceased a little bit, so...
Right. Are they, they're actually court offenses, I guess, with that amount?
I believe we have currently about 13 who requested a trial, and everyone has paid their violation and for the whole time.
Right.
So we have court dates coming up in March.
But it's a violation against the vehicle.
Right. Against registered owner of the vehicle, correct.
So it's not, I mean, you're hoping, I mean, the same person probably drives the same car, but still it's...
And we verify that information in various ways.
With other things we're doing around, you guys are very helpful on our schools, and we appreciate everything. You know, the relationship we have is great, and it makes a difference. Are all our schools doing pretty, I'm not point-blank, but just, I mean, is everything, are we doing what we need to do to help you out, and you're, I know you're helping us out?
Absolutely. We have a great relationship, and I'm very thankful for it.
Yeah.
Our staff enjoys working with the principals and administrators and the students in every school.
We appreciate what you do.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
Thank you very much for the partnership.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Another question?
No.
Everyone have a good evening, thank you.
You too.
Me too.
In climate weather discussion, Mr. Pender.
President Smith, members of the board, I asked both Amy and Sid, Sid to kind of refresh what our inclement weather decision-making process is. We've had a lot of questions about that recently, and I think in past history, pretty much once a year, they do bring this presentation, maybe a little earlier, and I just wasn't really aware of that, to kind of prepare for the upcoming season. So I know we're in the midst of the season, but I think it's always good to go back and look at why we make the decisions we make and how we conclude that. But then I also have had lots of questions about virtual learning during inclement weather days, and so I've asked Mrs. Houdock to come and share with you our plan of action, and if, you know, after tonight, after we have to present it, and then after tonight, it doesn't need to be voted on or approved, it just needs to be presented, then it can go to Mr. Trater's office, and we can move forward with that. So kind of, I know these were not on the agenda for a long period of time, but I think they're two things that are, are important for the public to hear.
No, people, I mean, people ask a lot, you know, especially on the day, it amazed me, one day it's 60 degrees, the next day it's snowing.
Yeah.
But the good thing is the weatherman hit it on the head, you know, so, you know, and safety's a primary issue, and I know it's not an easy call sometimes.
No.
Okay, Mr. Pender.
Good evening, President Smith, Dr. Salins, board members. I'm Sid Pender, Chief Operating Officer.
I'm Amy Houdock, Assistant Superintendent.
And the purpose of the presentation is to explain the process of how Queenas County Public Schools determines when to implement the following due to inclement weather. And basically, we're looking at three different scenarios: a 90-minute delay, a non-scheduled early dismissal, and closings. I'm going to tell you, out of all of those, probably the non-scheduled early dismissal is the most stressful one, because you're releasing students out, it's not scheduled, and you've got kindergarteners, pre-K, first and second, and you're expecting mom and dad or, you know, somebody to be home for them. That's the toughest one. We want to educate the community on how Queenas County Public Schools determines whether schools will be opening 90 minutes late, closing early, or closed for the date due to inclement weather. There's a lot of thought, and there's a lot of time that goes into this process. The source is where we get our information. AccuWeather, we have a subscription to. We can call up, speak to a meteorologist 24/7. Myself, John Murdock, do it all the time, just to double-check. Yes, you can look at your phone, your phone's giving you some information, but when you're able to speak to a meteorologist and say, hey, you know, am I interpreting this correctly? What are you seeing? You know, AccuWeather, the first snowstorm we had said, hey, I know everybody's saying, you know, four to six inches, you're going to get 10. I'm telling you, it's coming. And I'm like, hey, it's 61 degrees right now. Well, it's coming. You know, they're, they're pretty precise, and then we did have one where all the stations and the news media kept saying, and meteorologists, hey, it's going to snow, it's going to snow, and I'll talk about that in a minute, and it, it never came. Again, I want to say, this is probably one of the most stressful decisions that we have to make as a school system, and it's, it's not something that we take very lightly. So I, I lose a lot of sleep over this. It's, it's stressful. The National Weather Service we use, we use our media, local media outlets, Weather Channel, Mima, and we also use quite frequently the underground, Weather Underground websites. And when you're looking at this, basically, you have five weather model forecasts. And what this is, is it's a prediction. I mean, they're predicting how the weather's going to come through. So as you know with predictions, they're not always 100% accurate. They're trying to give you the best information at that time to make the decision. And what I try to tell parents when they call in is, we're basing our decision off the information we have at the time. So if it's 5:00 AM, you know, we're making a decision at that time, yes, the weather could change, you could be following, you know, the, the European model instead of the, the North American model. So it's information they're gathering, we're looking through it to make the best determination. Along with the different weather information, about 3:30, 4 o'clock in the morning, we're starting to make phone calls. Maryland State Police out of the Centerville Barrack, you know, the troopers are out on the roads throughout the night. What are you seeing on the roads? Are you seeing ice? Are you seeing any accumulation? The sheriff's office is a great resource. We also work with Department of Emergency Services. I do want to give a big plug to Queenas County Public Works for, you know, getting the roads clean, along with the Department of Parks and Recreation. I don't know if you're aware of it, but Recreation and Parks are the ones that clean our parking lots, our sidewalks, along with Jim O'Donnell and myself, and the custodians assist with that. Maryland State Highway Administration, and we also have Queenas County Public School Spotters, which are contracted bus drivers, and our county bus drivers, I'll talk about in a few minutes. If you go out to our transportation office, you'll see two huge video screens. One has all, or most of the traffic cameras for SHA up there that they can look at all the time. We also have another one that has the exterior cameras of the schools up. So what do the parking lots look like? Okay, did they actually get to Churchill Elementary School and remove that, or are they still in the process of doing that? So we use all of those resources to try to make a decision. Right here, we have the temperature and visibility readings, where Mr. Murdock and his staff go on Weather Underground, they start looking at if it's fog, what is the visibility, we start jotting that down, so we have the data in case any issues come up. Is it a quarter mile? Is it a mile? Are we looking at just at the northern end of the county, the southern end of the county? What is the temperatures of the roads out there, which is a major decision factor of, you know, is the snow going to melt when it hits the road or not? Then we also have our weather spotters that we call out. Again, they're contracted bus drivers or county bus drivers, and if you looked at the previous slide and this slide, we try to pull from different geographical locations throughout the county, because as you know, it could be foggy on Ken Island, and it could be sunny in Churchill.
Yep.
Or it could be snowing in Churchill and raining on Ken Island. It's a, we live in a very unique county. When the weather comes across the bay and hits the bay, there's a lot of different things that occur. Here is where it all falls into place. About 3:30 in the morning, Mr. Murdock gets up, and then he kind of notifies me around 4 o'clock, hey, let's go. When you look at this process, there are a lot of things that go in the play, place to make this decision. By 4:40, we like to have a decision made whether we're going to close school or delay it for that day. And some of you are going, okay, that's, you know, an hour before students get picked up. Our first students get picked up around 6 o'clock, a little bit after 6 o'clock. Remember, we have a two-tier bus system? So with that being said, we like the notification to go at around 5 o'clock. You know, sometimes we're still gathering data at that time, so it may be a few minutes after that. The one great thing we have with School Messenger, when the statement goes out, we can track that to see how long it took to go through. Was it 10 minutes to go through one cycle, then it goes to another cycle if you didn't answer? We can look on there, and somebody says, hey, I never got notification. You can look on School Messenger, and it will say, yep, at this time, the phone, you know, it was sent to you. A very valuable resource. So at 6 o'clock, like I said, the first students start getting on the bus. That used to be a little bit before that. We've kind of shaved that off and moved some things around. Now, if you see some schools, and we did this, systems, we did this once this year, we're going to do a 90-minute delay and then reevaluate. Really, all that's doing is biding you, you know, another 90 minutes. The decision still has to be made, but if you remember, I was discussing earlier, they were calling for snow to start at 7:00 AM, you know, about a week and a half ago, then they moved it back to 8:00, then they moved it back to 9:00. You know, everybody kept saying, it's coming, it's coming, and then the rain came. So the decision still has to be made, and if you're looking at it, we do 90 minutes, surrounding schools have two hours, so they have a little bit of a half-hour gap there. But again, that's just giving you a little bit of time to make that decision. We try not to use it that often, because I just feel like it gives some conflicting, you know, information out there, because you do a 90-minute, then all of a sudden, parents adjust to that, then you go, okay, we're closed. And then they have to adjust to that. So, you know, we try to stick with just making one decision, but that's not always possible based on the, the weather forecast. Some people go, okay, well, it's easy just to close the schools. Well, that decision needs to be made at 10 o'clock in the morning, because if you're looking at that schedule, at 11:30, 11:45, you have pre-K that is being sent home from Centerville Elementary, Graysonville Elementary, Ken Island Elementary, and Matta Peak Elementary. So those buses that are taking those students home then have to come back and grab the other students, or are we going to continue on with the day? So you still have that midday run you have to take into account for. And then at 1 o'clock to 1:15, you have the afternoon pre-K begins to arrive. So it's not an easy decision, you know, to have that early dismissal. And then if you look at it, dismissal times for what I call first tier, Ken Island High School, Queenas High School, the middle schools, and Sellers Elementary is 2:30. The second tier is about 3:20 to 3:45. So here's where you start adding more to the decision. You have the Rise Academy, where we have students coming from all across the county to Centerville, right here behind the Board of Ed. We have to transport the Ken Island High School students from, from Ken Island High School to the CTE classes at Queenas High School. How are we getting those students back there in the event that we have a early dismissal? We have the Fire School, where we're taking students from Ken Island High School and Queenas High School. And then a lot of times, the special needs buses, we have special needs buses that go to Baltimore County, Baltimore City, Anne Arundel County. Like last week, on Friday, all of a sudden, you have those counties starting to close early. Well, guess what? We're not going to have that bus sitting over there if they're closing early and coming through, through those counties. If it's too bad for them to operate, then, you know, our students need to come back here to Queenas County. And that takes a lot of time to figure out and to, to get put in place. You have the ninth-grade annex, where we're continuously shuttling students back and forth to the main campus. You have athletic trips and events, and then you also have field trips. Somebody at Smithsonian that day, somebody at the Baltimore Zoo, and then we have the late buses for both high schools, which include partnering for youth. How do you receive notice of the decision? School Messenger, like I said earlier, is an excellent tool to use. The Queenas County Public School website, Facebook page, local television station here in Queenas County, and then we also have the television, television stations to 11:13, 16:45. Radio stations, and each person has a job. You know, John Murdock's job is make sure it's on the TV. And I can't tell you how many times you have to sit there and watch it over and over and over to make sure that it says the correct message. I mean, I've seen it before where they've said, you know, Queenas County's closed when we're only at 90 minutes. Same thing, you have somebody putting it out on the School Messenger, the website. E.D. Cook does the, the radios, stations. Code blue, code red, basically, we came down to that about seven or eight years ago. Code blue is, you know, basically our motto, is it up to you? I mean, schools are closed, but faculty and staff can, not faculty and staff, 12-month employees can use liberal leave. Code red, that's when you have about 10 inches, is 10 inches or a foot of snow, and everybody's shut down. I get asked this question quite a bit, why are schools not open in zones? There's about 372 square miles of land which stretches from Chesapeake Bay to the Delaware Line. I talked about the different weather patterns that come through. On any given day, we have about 70, 700 students, 89 buses, and they navigate about 11,474 miles.
A day.
Day. Between, you have your two bus runs in the morning, two bus runs in the evening, that's a lot of miles. There's a two-tier bus system, and with that being said, say, the first tier is Sellersville Middle, Sellersville Elementary, and Queenas High School. Those buses then have to go to Centerville to do the second tier. Same thing on Ken Island, those buses do the first tier, and then we have some buses that actually come up here to Centerville to help out. So we couldn't take and just zone off one part of the county unless you wanted to add a third tier or a fourth tier, which is a tremendous amount of money. That's why we don't look at, you know, separating different systems, we try to keep them together. Again, you add the CTE classes, that creates another issue of getting those students home. Other factors to consider, and here's one that a lot of times people forget, you have about 466 high school students that drive to school every day. You're talking first-time drivers, you're talking, you know, learning how to drive on it. My daughter has her learner's permit, you know, and I'm still a little skeptical. You know, but I told her, I said, hey, you got to go out, you got to try this, and we're going to do it in a protected area so you learn how to drive in the snow. But when I say 466, if you've rode by Queenas High School or Ken Island High School in the morning, and everybody's funneling into there, then you're talking a thousand-and-some employees throughout the county. That's a lot of traffic going in, and all it takes is one little hiccup, and, you know, it's, it's not going to end well. We have to think about Public Works for Queenas County, Centerville, and State Highway. What time are they coming out? State Highway, you're pretty much out 24/7, putting down salt. The smaller areas, the county, Centerville, you know, that's a tremendous strain on their budget, you know, overtime and those types of things. Queenas County, Parks and Rec, what's their ability to remove snow? At first 10 inches we had, you know, even I was out there pushing it, but at some point, you get done pushing because there's nowhere to put it. You need something to move it. You have to take that into account. What time are those different agencies coming out? You know, are they out at all night? Are they coming out at 5 o'clock? I will say, again, you know, Todd Mon and his staff do a great job, and Robbie Blackston with Parks and Rec, I can't say enough about, they, they've done a tremendous job this year of, of helping us out. And then here's one, home and business owners' ability to remove snow from the sidewalks. Queenas County High School, the town of Centerville falls within the walking distance to that to that high school, so there are no buses to pick up students in the town of Centerville. All those students either catch a ride with mom or dad, or their guardian, or, you know, their brother or sister, or they walk. So if the sidewalks aren't clear, we have students then walking in the street. Um, that's a major safety issue, uh, you know, something that, that really bothers me. So, you know, it's not just one particular issue that we're looking at, you're looking at many, many issues. We do have each year, um, a school delay and closing committee that meets, um, just to go over our different procedures. Usually in May it occurs, um, we ask, uh, for some parents, contracted bus drivers, principals, uh, a board member, law enforcement, um, transportation, and myself. And some of the topics we discuss, you know, are, should we use a one-hour delay? Should we go to 90-minute delay or a two-hour delay? And there's been a lot of discussion about that, and I can tell you from every year since I've been involved in it, the 90 minutes has hung around. You know, what's an extra half an hour gonna gain you? Um, you know, for the two hours, it gets you 30 minutes, but the 90 minutes kind of flows with our schedule, with the high school having 90-minute periods, it does fit very well. And I think it's important, sometimes we focus on, uh, it seems like we've had a lot of days this year. The next two slides, uh, we started keeping data for the, the past 13 years, and this kind of gives you a ballpark of where we're falling into. So far this year, we've had six closed, um, and, and one delayed. Go through last year and on down the line, you know, basically, you know, four to five, six closings a year. 2019 to '20, we had four delayed, um, and we can even tell, go back and tell you, was it for fog, was it for snow, was it for ice, those types of things. And then on the last page, I mean, you better go back to 2013, '14, you're talking 12 closings and 10 delays. So that's 22 different days out of 180. I mean, that's, that's quite a bit. So we try, again, like I said, to stay away from that early dismissal, um, because that is just a, a, a very hard time and a very stressful time for parents, bus drivers, everybody. Um, you know, I can tell you on Friday, um, I was having a meeting with Jane, um, about Capitol Projects, and my, I wasn't quite there in the meeting because you're just listening to the bus radio, you know, you know it's snowing, you know, what's going on, what are they seeing? Um, and, and there's a lot of, uh, time and effort that's put into this. In conclusion, while making a decision to have 90-minute delayed opening, dismissing early, or closing for the day due to inclement weather is never easy, the Queen Anne's County Public School Transportation Department analyzes the conditions to make the most appropriate decision for the safety of students and staff. And I think when it comes down to it, it's, it is about, like I said, the safety of, of everyone involved in this. To kind of sum it up, I would say it's kind of like a cruise ship or an aircraft carrier. Once it gets in motion, it's hard to stop, and it's not gonna stop on a dime. Um, people will often call and say, well, hey, it came in, um, at 7:30, how come, you know, you didn't stop it then? Well, guess what? We have students waiting for a school bus that's coming. You know, a lot of, some of them don't have phones, they're not gonna be out there knowing that the bus is not gonna come, and then you have people standing along the side of the roads, you know, with the potential to get hit. You just heard, um, Lieutenant Neil about, you know, red light runners. So there's a lot of areas that are covered, it's not an easy decision. Again, it's, it's, you're looking at the best information you have at the time to make that decision. Um, and any questions or concerns?
Sid, we love you and you're doing an excellent job.
I can tell you.
You too, amen.
It might be foggy tomorrow morning, so it'd be another early day, but...
Do we go down any private roads that aren't owned by the county? Because some of these developments are, haven't been turned over to the county or the town, um, and they're out of the county's jurisdiction as far as doing things, and I just know when you're doing planning and zoning, some of these cul-de-sacs and stuff, and, and, you know, it's, it's, these buses don't turn on a dime either, and, you know, you have snowbanks, you got even homeowners, because, you know, I can plow my lane out, and then the snowplow goes by and there's, you know, three feet of snow. So, yeah, I think people just gotta realize the decisions are being for the safety and the well-being of our kids, and, you know, it's, one person can look at it and say, this shouldn't happen, but, you know, when you're looking at 7,000, over 7,000 kids, 11,000, that's pretty amazing that what we have to do, or what you have to do.
Yeah, we, I mean, we have a great team, we really do, and, and I can't say enough about John Murdoch and, and his staff, and, you know, when I get in there, I mean, heck, they've already been, been there for a half an hour, you know, I mean, they, they put the time and effort into it. I mean, Jim O'Donnell doesn't have to come out and plow snow, I mean, he comes out, you know, we have the equipment, he's out, I'm out, you know, trying to get the, you know, everything clear. But we, to answer your question, no, we don't go down private, you know, um, driveways or, if the sign is green, that's a county road, if it's blue, it's a private.
Okay.
But we are, we did have issues, we had that first 10 inches, we, and we took three days off, we had issues trying to navigate a bus in a cul-de-sac because, again, you're pushing the snow, but then you gotta pick it up and move it. Especially in the town of Centerville, we had some, a major issues of, of trying to get a bus going down the road, and then a car's coming at it, you know, there's nowhere to go because it's piled up on the side.
I can think about Northbrook. There's many, I mean, I watch these buses go in there, and there's not enough room for two cars to start with, and somebody's on each side of the thing, and plus, you, and you got snow around it.
Yeah, it's, it's not easy.
I think the people, and I think these dates and times people need to know about because that's when they need to look at their cell phones or their, whatever, how are they getting this information? And, you know, you, you gotta make a call at a certain time, because like you said, you can't, you can't wait to the last minute. You got, you know, I mean, and the last minute's 5 o'clock because, like you said, the buses are on the road at 5, 5:30, going to their destinations to pick up.
When you think about it, we're the largest employer, and then you add all the students involved in that.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, it, it's not a 12-person operation, you know, where we can just go, okay, everybody go home, you know, early today, or everybody just take the day off, I mean, it's...
And you're dealing with from kindergarten to high school, with, with each of their own obstacles.
Yeah, that's very true.
Well, like I said, there's one member like Audrey Marcus, appreciate what you do, it's amazing, and tell your staff we appreciate what they do.
Thank you.
You know, they're, they're doing it, they're not, you know, we're, we're sitting thinking Sunday morning, would they close school or not? Well, they've been working for three or four hours.
Lot of coffee.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yes.
So, very smooth segue into, um, presenting preparation for virtual inclement weather day. So this conversation has been going on since probably end of October, well into November, but the key thing, um, and I'm gonna show you on the first slide, is that we just received guidance from the state. So once we receive the guidance, as you will see, um, at the bottom, it says, the virtual inclement weather day plan presented to, at a board meeting. So we got it, and this is the first board meeting that we have in order to do that. So I know that there was a, Mr. Schifanelle, you had commented on, you had gotten some ideas, but, um, we just received this, so. Anyway, so, all right, let's start. So why are we doing this? Because we have used all of our built-in inclement weather days plus additional days, and I think we're sitting currently at three. So the MSD guidelines that came in are that, um, students need to access minimum of four hours of synchronous instruction a day. Um, attendance will, um, be taken for all students, opportunities for students to make up work missed during inclement weather days. Virtual inclement weather day plan must be posted on the local school's website, and then plus that we need to present it. Okay, so how would we do this? We would do it through synchronous instruction, the minimum of four hours, use of the School ogy platform, which is our learning management system, and we use the Zoom platform. So continuing with the how, pre-K in kindergarten, would be provided paper packets, one through five, grades one through five. Um, schools would ensure that students have a signed device at home. So this would be, if you think back to one of the storms that we had, we knew it was coming, and we would anticipate, if, if the storm doesn't come and, and Dr. Salins and Sid decide not to call it, then they just bring the device back, but at least it would be some forethought. Um, grade six through 12, our secondary schools, th- those students would be reminded to take their devices, which, that's kind of the expectation, but they don't always bring them home. So the proceed, the procedures, um, would be that all schools would follow a 90-minute delay schedule, and those schedules are located on each of the school's webpages, and students and parents are accustomed to those schedules, it's something we use when we have a fog delay. Um, teachers will report to their assigned buildings, students will be expected to be present, and attendance will be taken, and that's per the guidelines. Um, hotspots have been issued to many students, and they are available still to those that need internet access. Um, students should reach out to their administrator or their counselor if they do need, um, a hotspot. Now, some of the students have them, have had them since the previous year, and our thought process is that, you know, if they had them before, they still probably need it, they just need to have a conversation, a conversation with their administrator or counselor about getting that hotspot reactivated. The procedures continued, um, so here's the key thing surrounding the, um, the decision for a closure to be virtual. Sid just went over in great detail that, um, Queen Anne's County Public Schools makes every effort to inform schools and community as soon as a decision is made, especially if it's a virtual, um, going to be a virtual closing. The appropriate conditions would need to be in place to run a virtual instructional day. Not all inclement weather days may result in a virtual instruction day. If the weather is severe enough to close school, buildings and offices, which is what Sid talked about, the code red, then Queen Anne's County Public Schools would not have a virtual instruction day. It would be implemented on days in which the schools can open offices on a delayed schedule but are not able to safely provide bus transportation. So for example, um, conditions are expected to improve but not timely enough for buses to run assigned routes. So you very explicitly explained all the timelines and how those need, how they're so specific and decisions needed to be made, but that's because buses are covering a lot more ground than staff going to work. Do any of you have any questions?
Or comments?
Well, my question would be, I mean, we had, when we went virtual, it was, you know, we turned on a dime, it was tough. How can these teachers and parents, you know, we think it's gonna snow, we're gonna have a storm Thursday, Thursday, Friday, it's gonna be raining. Are you gonna sit there and tell them to prepare, it could, it's, it could, uh, be a snowstorm? I mean, where, where, and then the teachers have to start doing virtual, how quick do these hotspots get turned? I mean, I'm assuming, some of them have hotspots, some of them don't, how quick can these hotspots? We're not, they're not all now, I mean, we've turned them all off, correct?
Not all of them.
But most of them, some of them.
Some students are currently using them.
But the ones that don't have it, that would have returned them in...
If they need them, and, and they need them on, they just need to speak with their administrator.
We turn them back on.
And that's what a little bit of the concern is, is that at the end of last year, unfortunately, we, we didn't recover all of the hotspots that are out there. So the hotspot itself is still out there, um, but of course, we had deactivated it, so it hasn't been returned back. So those students who still have their hotspot need to let someone like their guidance counselor or their administrator know, um, I need my hotspot on if we were to have an emergency day because, um, I still have it, or bring it in and say, I need my hotspot activated.
And that's something that we have asked the schools to...
Right.
How, how much lead time will a teacher know that when they're gonna have to do virtual and not in, in, uh, direct learning?
It would be the day before. It would be before kids are dismissed the previous day.
And principals have met with all staff to let them know and have prepared, um, like at the elementary level where they don't take their device home every day, they use those right in the classroom in general, um, they've already reviewed right before Christmas because we were hopeful to get approval from the state before Christmas. Um, but unfortunately, we didn't, we didn't, but, um, every, um, teacher reviewed with the student, so the student has their login information for this year, and they went to the Schoology platform to ensure the student was refreshed and remembered how to do that. So we're well-prepared for that, but it is a tricky timing thing, just like any weather. So if we, like you said, if we get enough advance notice and we can let them know by, say, 10, 11 o'clock in the morning on the, on the day before, to say, hey, make sure you take him your devices, make sure that, you know, you have your hotspot available if you need it, um, then, then we can do that. But again, it's, if we're shut down on a code red, we're obviously not gonna be able to get stuff in so that they have their supplies they need.
These recent snowstorms, like, we were talking about them for days before they came, so those are perfect examples of how this would work. Um, if we just had something come out of the blue and we had a snowstorm or an ice storm that we weren't prepared for, it just wouldn't, it wouldn't work. It's going to have to be, that's why we're saying, it has to be perfect conditions for this to be effective.
And I have to say, it's not gonna be perfect to, to go back to a virtual day. I mean, it's absolutely not, it's gonna be full of holes because we're not used to doing it, and it, look how long it took us to get up and running, you know, to get to that point. So it's not gonna be perfect, so I think we're, we're in a better position, certainly, but it's cer, it's, it's not gonna be perfect, not every student will be able to log on, they'll have issues with logging on or issues with internet, it's not gonna be perfect.
And we do have, um, things in place that will support the students, so, I mean, and we're meeting with principals next week, and we are going to talk to them about specific things.
I mean, when, when, I'm sorry, go ahead, Ellen.
No, it's okay. I was gonna say, I kind of think that maybe Dick and I are thinking along the somewhat lines is that this seems like an awful lot of, an extra layer, even more in advance than what he needs to make these last-minute decisions, so that'd be tough, and, and it said the why was using up all the inclement weather days, so I'm just wondering what the, the, why we only factored in for three when we've never had just three? I'm wondering if, you know, like, why?
Yeah, so the, the state, we do a three-year rolling average of use when it relates to how many snow days you put into your school calendar.
It was three last year, too.
So you, you, you kind of look at how many you've had over the last three years, and you average that out, so if you start having more, then you add in more, and at one point, I'm sure it was five.
It was five for a long time, and then it was...
Likely, we may be moving into a cycle where we have to go back to five. Um, so it is, that's also a tricky thing when you're doing a calendar over a year out in advance, and then you have some years where you have no snow at all. So it, it is a tricky balance, but the state does recommend that three-year rolling average. Um, they, they honestly don't want you to put in too, you know, they don't want you to overpad it and have all of these, these extra days put in there, so it's a delicate balance.
Maybe I'm not understanding then, because it said, delay in closing, we had six closed this year so far, five last year with six delayed, four delayed in 2019, four in 2018, am I not reading it right then? Of what the rolling...
No, what the data was.
Yeah, and seven before that. The last time we've had just two and 10 delayed was in 2016.
You're correct, but also, when they switch, I believe, I'm not on the calendar committee, but, uh, when they switch to three, I believe that's also when the state said, hey, you better, you have to start on this date and you have to end on this date. And I think when they went through it, in order to keep everything going, they went down to three days instead of having also the five days. I think that played a factor into it.
Yeah, because it's just within the last few years. Well, and I will say, um, Ms. Bennett, that had we been given this opportunity, we would have had this ready to go before the first snowstorm, and we would have used when appropriate, and like, again, the code reds, we couldn't have done that. But when appropriate, we could have used, um, the plan, so we wouldn't be where we are right now. And, but, and the other thing is, is this is only good for this year. So hopefully, now that it's been put out, that beginning next year, it will come out to us at the beginning of the year, we can get it in place before winter, the winter weather starts, so...
Thank you. I have two questions. I, I, and I have to ask this, you know, we have teachers who have small children, the children are not gonna be coming in, are you gonna allow the teachers to do virtual from home?
Um, do you wanna address, not, not from home, but we do have a plan for teachers with children. I've kind of taken care of that.
So then, in fairness for all, why can't all the teachers just stay home and do it from...
They're not staying home.
They're not staying home, they could bring their children with them.
Their school age.
School-aged children with them.
Okay.
School-aged children would be able to have permission to come in with the parent.
I didn't include that in there, but that would be part of the plan.
Well, I, I, we gotta be fair to the teachers, I mean, you're not picking the kids up by bus, you know, we gotta be fair to the teachers.
And we, and we had a conversation, so we did build that in.
Okay. Okay.
But, but on the opposite side of that, we have parents that are gonna be known that morning at 5 o'clock to make arrangements for their children to be somewhere else. Maybe not daycare, maybe a grandparents, maybe a neighbor. Are those people prepared to help these children go virtual? I mean, I think there's a lot of, I mean, and then all of a sudden, out of the class, you have 10% of them that can't do it, and then they go back to school the next day, and you got 20 kids did their homework and 10 that didn't because they were at their grandparents, they couldn't get on a computer, or their, you know, so, I mean, it's, it's one thing with virtual when it was all the time, but to turn on a dime, and, because these parents are gonna have to make some major decisions, I feel sorry for the teachers, but they're bringing their children into the school system. These parents are working and have to find a place for them, and on, on, at 5 o'clock in the morning. And I'm not saying they shouldn't have plans for that, but I think you're gonna run into some major trouble here to make this, I mean, it sounds good not to lose a day, but phew.
It's definitely, I mean, there's definitely challenges on both sides of it.
Absolutely. Um, but I, I think that, um, and, and one of the pieces, one of the guidelines is that, I mean, no student would be penalized if, if they aren't able to, they can make the work up. So that was one of the guidelines on the first page. But I think that the children that are able to navigate on their own, so let's just say your upper elementary, your middle, and your high school students, I mean, they're gonna be able to navigate it, your little, your younger elementary students, parents already have a plan in place for that. So if they struggle with it, there would be no consequence to that.
Is there any benefit to doing their homework, if they do the homework?
Well, we, we encourage them to, we, we encourage them to get on and do it. That's what we want them to do, but there wouldn't be a penalty.
There's also, okay, but nothing bonus for doing it?
Okay.
Well, bonus would be that they're, you know.
They're learning.
They're learning.
Yeah, they're with their class.
It's to be that self-motivated, like, do I wanna play, or do I wanna do?
Because my biggest concern to the younger ones, if we don't have those building blocks early, they're, they'll be behind the rest of their lives. And that's what we've always talked about, you know, the discussion of that. Well, we'll see what happens.
Yeah, it's definitely a challenge, but we kinda just wanna have a plan of action in place in case we do have, like, a good opportunity where we feel like we can successfully implement that.
Yeah, because that Farmers' Act did say January was gonna be wet, and it was, so this is February's not, so we'll cross our fingers. All right, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Okay, along that note, we're gonna address the calendar change survey results.
Yes, President Smith, members of the board. Lina is a little under the weather, so I'm gonna hop in here and we have.
Do you want me to do this?
Yes, please. Yes, I can't do it from here.
I know.
Thank you very much. So the purpose is to amend the 2022 school year calendar. The prior calendar includes three snow days. At the time that we prepared this, we had five snow days. Of course, we have six at this point. And the survey was sent out to all of our employees and our parents and our guardians, and it was open for a 10-day period for responses. The survey explanation at the beginning of the survey just shared the information that I just shared, and that the most important part is that we have a calendar that meets the 180-day KOMAR requirement. And I'm sure the board is well-aware that KOMAR has 180-day requirement as whether, in addition to that, they have a 1,080-hour. We well exceed the 80-hour. Some people would suggest that, why don't you just use that additional time since you're already in school, or if you need additional time, tack it onto the day. Unfortunately, we can't do that because we still have to meet 180-day attendance in that seat. So it doesn't equate to each other. So that the, the options were put out there, and we just asked them to select what they would most be interested in. Option one was that you add the, the extra days, two, and, two when we did the survey, now obviously three, just to the end of the year, and recreate a new end date for students. Option two was to add one day to the end of the year, and then the other day take as President's Day, which is currently a day all for students as it relates to KOMAR regulations, and this would make that a day on for students, that's a Monday. Option three was to keep the last day of school exactly the way it was originally, which was Tuesday, June 14th, take President's Day, and also take the Friday before Easter, which is currently, again, a holiday in KOMAR, and, and it requires permission from the state to, for both President's Day and that, because they're considered state holidays. The board had previously approved to do a half-day on the 14th, that, that 14th would become a full day of school, and then if the 15th is granted as a makeup day, then that would become a half-day. So you can see the responses here actually pretty close between option three and option one. Again, option one, add two days to the end of the school. Option three, which is to not add those two days, but to make those two days up with President's Day and the Friday before Easter. And you can also see that there was 2,600 responses. And just in a different format visually, so you can see it, the 40.8, 14.2, and the 44.8%, and how it was broken down by response, number of responses. Again, just to reiterate, you know, 180-day requirement is what we have to do. There are some exceptions to those rules, and, and it shares with you that you can ask for permission to go, which is what we've done. And the most important part, too, is that the board has the ability to make that effort, and if you've made that effort and you continue to have snow days, you can do a written application to the state board and request for a, for a waiver of the 180-day rule. So right now, you know, and for the board's information, the board needs to decide, do we wanna take at least the two days? We're gonna, hopefully you'll vote on that this evening, of looking at the survey, and if you agree with the survey and taking the two days to make President's Day a day on, make the Friday before Easter a day on, and then come back to you next month to determine whether we feel that we want to do the waiver or make another effort to make up additional time during spring break. And we may even wanna wait just a little bit longer than that, because we don't really know how long the snow season's gonna be, and we don't wanna request that waiver too too early before we know the exact number of days that we would be requesting a waiver for.
Quick question, could we actually do the primary and general elections when some of our schools are used as election sites, voting sites?
So you're suggesting that we would open that day up?
No, I'm saying, is that an actual option when those schools are used for voting, so there are people coming in and out to vote? Can we really have kids in school that day?
Right, there's only, and I don't have it right in front of me, there's only like five districts that are approved to do that, and I know Queen Anne's County is not one of them because of that reason. And those five districts can demonstrate where they can cut off the area to be able to make it a public access and not.
So that's not really an option for us under that list?
Not those days.
Not that day.
Correct.
But I, I think that's a good point that this board should consider with the county, do we use our schools for election days? I mean, they have firehouses.
Firehouses and other.
They have, they have senior centers now, they have a lot of other things, and I think, you know, and you let the schools start too early or go too late in the summer, we lose instructional time. And I think when we, you know, we gotta come up this year, but we should seriously take a look as a board, talk into the county, give them heads up, and saying, we'd like you to look at other options than using the schools, because this does put a burden on us this year, like Ms. Brent said, would give us some options that we cannot use.
Right, and I know that Dr. Noel has been working and prepared to share some draft calendars very soon, so for this year, that might not be a possibility, just because those have already been developed and.
Well, next, well, next year's not election year.
Okay, yeah, I wasn't thinking, sorry.
So we're, next year would be the following year, it'd be the presidential election.
Okay, I apologize, I wasn't thinking.
So we probably wouldn't need it.
Yeah.
You know, that wouldn't affect you next year, but I think it's something we might wanna keep in mind for the next cycle.
Especially since we have, we have early voting now.
Right.
So why do we have to have the schools on that particular day when we have early voting at the firehouses, at the libraries?
Something that we're discussing, though, for regards to, does calendar change? Are we asking for?
No, no, we can't. That is, that's off the table this year, but I think Ms. Brent brought up an interesting point, and it might be something we can look at in the future. Not, not this year, and next year's not election year, but the next presidential, '24, talk to our commissioners and say, you know, with, here's why we would like, like the schools to be an option.
Right, exactly. Yeah, I mean, I know we're good partners, and we do try to make good stories of that, but we also, there's other opportunities, so maybe we can work it out to where they can use other opportunities.
Dr. Salins, since we do have an additional snow day already, could we just go ahead and add the extra day at the end as well as these proposed changes of the 21st, the 14th, and the 15th?
You, you could. My recommendation would be to wait, because we might wanna do a waiver of the 180 days.
Okay.
I mean, this is made up prior to this last snow day.
Yes, okay.
I'm just asking.
Yeah, and, and because sometimes we don't have a lot of value added at the end by adding it, you know, it's, it is more beneficial to try to make up those school days during the school year.
Right.
And so the only other opportunity, really, my recommendation would not be to touch Memorial Day, but you do have the week of spring break, and the board does have the purview, as long as it's not the Easter Monday, you'd have to get permission from the state to do the Easter Monday, but Tuesday through Friday, the board does have the right to, to change their calendar without permission from the state on that.
So you know that, some may not know this, but years ago, we approved to have President's Day be added, and it snowed on that day.
Okay, Ms. Brent, would you like to, let's go around, make some comments, and then we'll do it. Do you have any more comments that you'd like to make on this calendar?
No.
Tammy?
No, I'm good.
My thing would be, I agree, we need to do something, and we might have to do more, but I think we should act on one of these three. My, my profession is number three, but we'll talk about that in a second. Mark?
Same feeling, number three, you know, that's the results, and, and certainly waiting before we fall for a exemption, or exception to the 180-day rule, yeah, makes sense.
Sure is good effort.
Right.
I agree, option three, because it gets those votes, and wait for the exception, yes.
I have a motion. I need, I'm gonna call for, you want to just be voted on by the board?
Yes, the board has.
Can I get a motion to accept one of the options?
So I make a motion to accept option three, make Monday, Monday, February 21st a full day, make Thursday, April 14th a full day of school instead of early dismissal, make Friday, April 15th an early dismissal day instead of no school.
I have a motion, I have a second.
Second.
Any further discussion? All is in favor, I?
Aye.
Ayes have it, we'll, we'll go with option three and put that out.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, next one is.
We're gear here.
Sell kindergarten readiness assessment.
All right, good evening, President Smith, Dr. Salins, board members, and executive team. My name's Michelle McNeil, and I'm the supervisor of early learning, reading language arts K-2, Title I, Title III, and migrant education. Today, we're gonna look at our kindergarten readiness assessment, just to provide a brief overview of the assessment and to share our 21, 22 readiness data. So the KRA assessment is assessed at the beginning of the school year for all of our kindergartners. They're assessed on four domains, social foundations, language and literacy, mathematics, and the physical well-being and motor development. The KRA data helps us, provides us with information around skills that are important for kindergarten readiness and later school success. We're gonna first start looking at our most current data in regards to the state, and you can see here how we compare it to the state. The state was at 40% demonstrating readiness, and we were at 41%. And then at the approaching readiness, 37 and 33.
And that's a state average?
The 40, yes.
40%.
Is what the state was at, was 40%.
Are there a big difference in some counties? I mean, are some of these counties really screwing this number of 40%, making it a lot lower than it would, I mean, like, is a mean maybe 50 or 60?
Um, not, I mean, the state saw a big drop overall in all the counties. And when we look at the data, we did not assess our students the year prior, so the state actually dropped 7% from the 1920 school year on the number of demonstrating readiness. So these students that we are, we have tested were our students in pre-K last year. So we did see a decrease in the number of pre-K students, and then the virtual option was a struggle for a lot of our pre-K students with devices and the work. So, you know, I think it was statewide that all the counties saw a decrease, and actually, Stephen Hicks from the State Department talked about that yesterday at our briefing, that statewide, there was a decrease in every county.
This is statewide, do, do they have county-by-county numbers?
Um, yes.
I'd love to see the top five, see how we rate.
Sure, I can send you the county-by-county data, it was shared with us, so yes. All right, so the next one is looking at just Queen Anne's County over the last several years, as I mentioned, we did not assess in 2021. And partly is that is, the assessment itself is done by observational and iPad, so because the students weren't in the building, we could not do the observational, and that was statewide. No one in the state completed the assessment. So you can see where we were in 1819, and we've decreased in our demonstrating readiness, but we're hoping to start moving forward to provide more opportunities for our students for pre-K so that they're ready for school. Next is just a little overview of our each school. So each school does have access to the KRA data, the principals, the leadership team, and the classroom teachers, so that they can do a little bit of a deeper dive on identifying students' strengths and needs based on their students. So you can kinda see where we are at the school level for each of those areas.
I guess one that lasts on emerging readiness, readiness?
Readiness.
Readiness, I'm sorry. That, one school's out of, why is that such a spike compared to the other ones?
That's a very high EL population at Sellersville Elementary School. We have a lot of students, even though at Sellersville Elementary, we do have three full-day pre-K classrooms, we do have a lot of students that join in at the kindergarten level, and they just, they struggle a little bit more with those readiness skills. So as I mentioned at the beginning of the PowerPoint, there are four domains, so this graph just gives you a little idea of where we are as a county in each of those domains. Noticing that our language and literacy is our weakest area at this time, math and social foundation are about the same. And then our data does allow us to dig a little bit deeper, so I just provided some informational graphs on two of our student groups, students with IEPs and our EL students. And as you mentioned, Mr. Smith, you know, with that one group at Sellersville, you can see the next slide where our English language learners are in that, many of them are in the emerging readiness stage. And you can see, actually, they are higher in emerging readiness in the mathematics section versus your language and literacy. So, does anyone have any questions?
That's a quick ones, because it's the kindergarten readiness assessment. Do we do an end-of-year assessment to see how these?
So there is not an end-of-the-year readiness to see what they've grown. The kindergarten readiness is really built on to provide those teachers of what skills they're lacking at the beginning of the year, so that they can build some flexible groups and learning opportunities for those students. As a county, we do have assessments that are county-based, we have benchmarks that we use to assess our students, and we also have the Exact Path, if you remember, that was introduced last year. We use our Exact Path to monitor our student progress. But the state does not provide us the KRA at the end of the year to see how well they do.
The other board members?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, 7:06, this will be a first reading of policy 110.
Yes, President Smith, members of the board, we discussed previously that we needed to kinda come back to the policy on policy, basically, is this, and removing the policy committee, which kind of narrows your stakeholders and who has the opportunity to actually review and provide the board with comment and support for, and direction, and any type of recommendations to proposed policies, and replace that one small group with two much larger groups that include more stakeholders. So the school system improvement committee would be a representative from every single school, the union representative to be able to go through and be ANS representative. So you'd have a much larger variety of stakeholders to review policy. And then the CAC would be your community advisory council, and that would be made up of recommendation from each board, two recommendations from each board member that would represent your jurisdictions and jurisdictions, and as well as two recommendations from every principal, which would represent their school interests as it relates to maybe a PTA person, someone who, a parent who's very involved in there. And any other community that we would choose to, maybe Parks and Rec or Character Counts, you know, those types of partnerships that we have. So those two committees would be developed, and any policy would go through those as opposed to just going to a much smaller school-based body of, of folks that would look at, at policy. So the, the modifications include some cleaning up, basically, you'll see some of the red lines are simply cleaning up, but then you'll see the removal of policy committee. If you go to three, it'll be under the direction of the executive team, policies will be evaluated and then recommended, and then the system improvement committee and the citizens advisory committee would review those, provide feedback for the board to be able to make good decisions about the changes for those. And these would, obviously, we, we haven't had a committee this year as we came in, so the executive team has been absorbing that for any recommendations and bringing them to the board. This, this really would be something that in the spring, we would get it set up so that we could begin next year, you know, as of July 1, we would begin that process.
I have a question about number one under A1. Says proposals regarding policies may originate with a member of the board. originate with a member of the board, the superintendent, staff members, parents, students, consultants, civic groups. So, we're saying that, what does that look like? So anybody, including just, anybody, basically, can propose a policy? Or can they, does that include revisions, repeals, et cetera? I guess I'm unclear as to.
Right, so, yeah, somebody could come and say that I don't agree with this policy, I think that it should be updated, cellphone use, so I think I would make a recommendation that would come to the executive team, the executive team would say, oh, you know what? It looks like it is time to make some revisions and things like that. So then they would go to the appropriate person in the district who oversees that, make those appropriate changes and recommendations, that would then go to the SSIC, CAC, they would take those recommendations and digest them, and then that would come to the board.
Can this be done in a timely manner? As far as, I mean, I mean, I think people need to understand policies, be a part of them, but I don't wanna make it too cumbersome where, you know, somebody presents a policy, we can't get it done in a reasonable amount of time.
And that's a good point, there's, you know, you can set it up several different ways, you can have just, once a month, they meet regardless of whether they have a policy or not, type of thing, so that you make sure that you hit all those marks you need to to review those policies.
I mean, you could, there's some kind, there's marks where you should be, if something's put in front of somebody and it's decided that it's gonna move into the system, then, you know, it's gonna have a thing where it's gotta.
The three readings and such and so.
Well, not three readings, but like, it's gotta come up with a policy in 30, 60, 90 days, and it's not something that sits there for six months or a year for something that's important. And of course, that's a loaded question, 'cause something important to me might not be important to somebody else.
Right, well, I think there should always be an exception, that if there's something that needs to be fast-tracked, and certainly, there's.
And there's laws that pass, and we have to do policies.
Yeah, there's, I put a provision in here for, and I apologize, let me find it. The board may vote to alter their, no, the review procedures, that wasn't it, hold on. Number three, under board presentations, all federal and state mandated policies or policies which require revisions will require one reading before receiving the Board of Education's decision. So basically, things that the state are telling us we absolutely have to do, and they're handing it to us, why does it need three reads? Because the board isn't gonna be able to make changes to it.
If it's mandated by the state.
Exactly, so that, that is a little bit of time-saving and not have to go through those three. And then, of course, you know, our attorneys here, but of course, the board has the authority to break their own policy. So if they said they wanted to, you know, we wanna fast-track this policy, or we want it to bypass these groups because we have a timeframe, the board has the right to do that.
We could ask for a first and second reading at the same time.
You could, absolutely.
Now, on the ongoing policy review, so what we're saying then is, each review shall occur by July 31, that, and it says upon completion, so I guess you're gonna be presenting us, or we're gonna go over what policies we're gonna be reviewing for the next year?
Yes, and see, that wasn't done this year. So this would, as of July, after meeting with the executive team, we determine and looking at all the policies, we really need a five-year plan for it, a four-year plan, really, of review, of these are what policies we're gonna review this year, and the following year, and the following year, and the following year. And in all fairness, there are some policies that they need to come off, they don't need to be reviewed anymore because they don't have relevance, so they need to be pulled. And there are some that need to be reviewed more often, technology should be reviewed more often, your cell phone policy, things like that should be reviewed more often. And then there's some policies that really can be, they're financial in nature, so they have to be updated on a different guideline as it relates to state rules, laws, federal laws that impact those. So policies are, it's hard to make a blanket statement that you're gonna just review, you know, we're gonna take all 100 policies, we're gonna divide them out, and we're gonna review this many this year, next year, and the next four years, because of the nature of the different policies. But yes, in July, it would be expected that the board would know for that year which policies were being reviewed.
Unless somebody else.
Unless somebody wanted to bring a change, or the state mandates and says, hey, there's a new bullying policy that just came up, and you need to have that passed by this month. Yeah, good points, really good.
And some policies probably can be combined, not together, but makes, I mean, we probably have, I mean, only a policy and everything, but simpler or better, if we don't need two policies for one issue, if it's.
Absolutely, absolutely. And I, and there will be a regulation that I haven't started to kinda parse through yet, it's a little bit longer, obviously, you know, you're broader stroked with your policy, and your regulation gets into your weeds and your nitty-gritty, and it's not something that has to come to the board for approval, but certainly come to you for an FYI, so I'll be working on that as well.
And this could be also reviewed by council to make sure.
Absolutely.
Okay. Any further questions by the board? Okay.
Thank you.
Ms. Towers?
Good evening, Dr. Salins, President Smith, board members, executive team, here tonight to present to you January expenditure status report for your review, the detail and summary. Any questions?
Yeah, a good question I have.
Yes.
In category 10.
Yes.
5,000, I don't like that, it's a big number, I've only used 42% of it so far? Is that just the way things are running, or are we doing good?
Well, you also have to think we're a month behind, as far as, this is the utility bills, so.
Okay, I mean, it's been cold.
It, it has, we are monitoring that, though.
This might get more, okay? And then farther down in category 12, same thing, it says fixed charges, we're 65%, so we seem to have a big number there.
Some of the items are not encumbered under fixed charges, and that would be retiree benefit, so that's why the number does seem high there, but it is as the bill comes in that it gets taken off.
So you don't anticipate it staying at 65%?
No, not at all, it'll, it'll be in the nineties, yes.
She says, no, not at all.
Yes.
Starting to see spring, and I see these numbers, I'm thinking maybe we'll have a little bit of.
And this isn't much, I'm just curious about the supplies material in category, the student health services, what's driving that to go over budget?
We had additional needs this year, in fact, it is a small amount for the amount of services that we do provide. In this case, this year was EpiPens, I believe, that we had to stop the school shelves and other supplies like that, that didn't qualify for COVID, was a standard doing business type of a supply. And we should probably look at increasing that a little bit, it's not much of a supply budget for our health.
Were we able to find out if we were able to give those shields back to get reimbursement since Maryland?
No, they were, it was a one-time shot, but we did check into it.
Are some of them being utilized by speech therapists and things?
They are, and we have students who have exemptions to, that aren't able to wear this type of mask and use those.
I loved her.
Yes, that's 'cause she's in the three-year-old program, so they really need to see the articulation there, yeah.
So they're available to staff and students if they need them?
Yes.
Ms. Towers, where is, where are the taxes, payroll taxes, where are they listed under?
They'll be under 12.
Under 12?
Yes.
Okay, that's another reason why, because the quarterlies, okay, thank you.
Okay, any further questions?
Thank you.
You're up on the next one.
Alright. So we're looking at ESTRA 2 and ESTRA 3 grants, you can see ESTRA 2 to date, the total available is 1.4, and then under ESTRA 3, it's 5.5. Remember, ESTRA 2, the good balance that is remaining is gonna be those cafeteria tables, projectors, COVID supplies, items like that. And in 3, ESTRA 3 really targeted the learning loss, so we'll have summer school coming out of this grant.
What summer school costs is, I mean, we did it last year, what was that number, was that?
Last year, it was a little over $1.1 million.
So we'll have that number again coming?
If, if we continue with the same format.
I mean.
Two sessions? Right now, yes, they haven't finalized the planning, though. We meet tomorrow. There you go.
But I mean, I'm sure we have kids lagging behind, and we've seen that.
Yes.
Okay, any other numbers? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next under, 709, we have a proposed resolution discussion, Mark Siffanelli.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I am moving to, I'm motioning for the board to adopt the resolution, provided to yourself and the other board members prior to this meeting, entitled Social Justice Education. That's my motion.
I have a motion, do I have, is anybody gonna second that?
A second.
A motion is second, okay, we'll have discussion, Mr. Siffanelli.
Certainly, so first, I'm gonna go ahead and read this resolution, Social Justice Education. Whereas the Board of Education of Queen Anne's County Public Schools is committed to promoting the worth and dignity of all individuals, the board will not tolerate or condone any act of bias, discrimination, insensitivity, or disrespect toward any person on the basis of race, ethnicity, color, age, religion, disability, genetics, ancestry, national origin, marital status, sex, or sexual orientation, socioeconomic status, or other legally or constitutionally protected attributes or affiliations. And I won't quote the right, or the policies. Whereas, in accordance with Section 7105A of the Maryland Education Article, the Board of Education is obligated to instill in our students the love of freedom and democracy, and I'm quoting, shown in the devotion of all true and patriotic Americans to their flag and country. Whereas the authentic founding principles of the United States and the United States Constitution include individual freedom, and I'm fogging up here, I'm gonna take this off. Whereas the authentic founding principles of the United States and the United States Constitution include individual freedom, liberty, justice, and equality under the law, and whereas, quote, "social justice," end quote, "is a vaguely defined amalgam of various critical and critical legal theories that contemplate the, quote, 'redistribution of wealth, resources, and power in a society,' end quote, and whose, quote, 'most direct philosophical antecedent is critical Marxism,' end quote." And I'll leave out the site. Whereas advocacy for the distribution of wealth, status, power, and other resources within a nation or society, whether through taxation, legislation, or other methods, are inherently political issues and serve as the primary motivation behind all political activity, and whereas the promotion of the tenets of social justice theory and its applications is an inherently political activity, and whereas Sections 1-301 and Section 1-304 of the Maryland Local Government Article restrict county employees from, quote, "engaging in political activity while on the job during working hours," end quote. Whereas activism is a practice that emphasizes direct vigorous action, especially in support of or in opposition to one side of a controversial issue, and that was quoted from Merriam-Webster. Whereas true education is not activism or political action itself, but rather intellectual preparation for the student's success in life. Whereas the Queen Anne's County Board of Education values and promotes honest and healthy research, debate, dialogue, and the right of students to express differing opinions, foster and defend intellectual honesty, engage in freedom of inquiry, and honor freedom of speech as required by the First Amendment of the United States Constitution, and that both students and educators should be encouraged to engage in the free marketplace of ideas. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education for Queen Anne's County, one, affirms that education in Queen Anne's County should reflect our fundamental values as a county, those of our state and our nation, to it, individual freedom, justice, and equality under the law, and the true potential inherent in every individual regardless of their social group identity. Two, affirms that we will continue making decisions affecting K through 12 public education based on the best interests of all students regardless of their race, sex, religion, socioeconomic status, or other characteristics, and that our sole focus remains that of providing the highest quality education to every child in our school system. Three, affirms that we will not support or impart any K-12 public education resources or standards, which profess as superior a particular social or political party, ideology, theory, including social justice platforms such as, quote, "economic justice, racial justice, environmental justice, or the socio-political tenets of Marxism or neo-Marxism, including the promotion of collectivism, which are contrary to the authentic founding principles of the United States, that is, individual freedom, liberty, and justice and equality under the law." Four, believes teachers, administrators, or other employees in our school district shall not make use of standards, lesson plans, instructional material, or instructional practices that serve to inculcate in students the following concepts. A, that an individual or his or her interests should be subservient to the desires of a collective, community, or their representatives. B, that individual rights as enumerated in the United States Constitution and laws are subservient or secondary to the desires of a collective, community, or their representatives. That meritocracy or individual traits such as a hard work ethic are racist, sexist, oppressive, or meant to benefit an oppressor or, quote, "privileged" group, or were created by members of a particular, quote, "identity" group to oppress members of another identity group. That an individual's moral standing, worth, or lack thereof is necessarily determined by his or her membership in any identity group or socioeconomic class. Five, believes that no teacher should intentionally influence a student to take a particular stand or viewpoint on any public policy, political, or social issue. Six, believes that teachers who discuss public policy or controversial social issues shall, to the best of their ability, strive to explore such issues from diverse and contenting perspectives without providing leading or suggestive outcomes, and allowing the student to learn, think critically, and present his or her position without bias. Seven, asks that the superintendent of schools submit to the proper.
No, no, just one thing, I'm reading directs, you say ask.
Yes, 'cause after discussing with council, I'm making the motion in open session, and I am amending this last.
Okay, I'm just trying to follow what you said.
Yeah, that's fine, thank you. Seven, asks that the superintendent of schools submit via the, via the policy and regulation development process to the proper committee to develop a policy reflecting the above affirmations and consistent with state and federal laws. So I've read the motion.
Okay, you wanna speak on it first, or?
Yeah, so I will speak to the motion first.
And then what we're gonna do is each board member will have a turn to speak, and you certainly will be given the last time to speak.
Alright, and, I see I got 10 minutes.
You got, right now, you got, just let, you got, as much time as you need, just, you know, move it.
Okay. Mr. President and board members, prior to making the motion, I did, I was asked on several occasions what my motivation was for bringing this. Also, after speaking to council, I believe that it's probably necessary that I do impart my motivation, so, as well as a little bit about my background, so I'm gonna add that in here, too. But I believe that most of you know that when I ran for the Board of Education in 2020, a big part of my promise to the public was to keep, quote, "politics out of the classroom", including and especially political activism in any degree whatsoever. Apparently, that message resonated with the public, I won't go into details, but it was a mandate when the latest board members were elected, including myself. There are several occurrences that did prompt my motivation to submit this motion and this resolution tonight. Dr. Salins, I'd ask that there'd be some exhibits available? So the first occurrence is a little further back in time, but it sets the stage for me to run for board in the first place, and it occurred in August of 2020, and it was the back cover of the Maryland State Educators Association magazine, which specifically was asking teachers to, quote, "engage in their activism, they were gonna support their activism," in quotes, "school-based activities, in planning lessons or events that support or promote social justice." And I've written about before, and I note in the resolution, activism is not education. The purpose of educating youth is to help them realize their fullest potential in life as both individuals and members of the larger community, to grow to be self-reliant to the extent possible, and to reach their fullest potential to chart whatever course they choose in life. To do that, students need to learn to think logically, and to think for themselves, and to question their conclusions. This is a universal proposition, no matter what one's background. Activism, on the other hand, and according to Merriam-Webster, is, quote, "a practice that emphasizes direct vigorous action, especially in support of or in opposition to one side of a." to one side of a controversial issue." Unlike education, activism presupposes that the answer to a, quote, "controversial socio-political issue" is a foregone conclusion. The activist does not question the conclusion, and there's no opposing viewpoint. Welcome. We see this increasingly on college campuses that provide intellectual, quote, "safe spaces" for young adults who are apt to become emotionally upset by opposing political viewpoints. Hence, when the MSEA openly recruited teacher activists with encouraging them with $500 grants to promote social justice in their classrooms, I have kept an eye out for any political activism in our own school system. The second event occurred just before this past Christmas. I was made privy to a professional development PowerPoint presentation by our equity specialist. And on her presentation, there was a continuum. I'm sorry, there were two slides that were of concern. Let me pull out mine. Apparently, Dr. Salins, at least the ones I have. It's on double-sided. All right. All right, Dr. Salins.
I have several other copies.
No, you're good. As always. So the first slide in the presentation suggests, quote, "a social justice education to examine the socio-political context that student experience is situated in," that's not my grammar, "to be center on consciousness about inequity within everyday aspects of life, social, environmental, economic, or political." The other slide shows an individualism-collectivism continuum. That is, on one side of the slide, I got, is individualism on one side and collectivism on the other side. And there's also a little proclamation that says, "This is not a good-bad binary," and it's got an individual-collectivism world map, and it's rated countries by numerically who's the most individualist, which ones are the most collectivist. The United States, of course, is up top. Guatemala, Ecuador, Panama, Venezuela, Colombia, Peru, El Salvador, South Korea are on the bottom as the most collectivist, the United States being the most individualist. I did discuss this with some of you individually, including the superintendent, who's been very helpful. She provided access to the videotaped professional development presentation, which clarified some of the issues, which also caused me additional concern, because the equity specialist stated, in her words, and I paraphrase, that we need to move more toward collectivism. So I'm going to take a minute to discuss collectivism, because it's critical to the understanding of social justice. Both are inherently political in theory and in their practical applications. And then I'm going to show how the two are related and, in fact, inseparable, and argue that because of its inherent political characteristics, specifically regarding the distribution of societal resources, it has no place in Queen Anne's County Public Schools. So after discussing with council, let me just tell you a little bit about my qualifications for bringing this motion. First, I did earn my BA in government and politics with a minor in economics at University of Maryland College Park. I graduated with honors magna cum laude. The coursework included the area of political philosophy, the studies of, for example, a little neoliberalism, neoliberalism, but also Marxism and communism. I subsequently earned my Juris Doctor at Maryland School of Law, where I studied legal philosophy and jurisprudence, including critical legal studies, critical race in law, feminist law, and critical race theory, and other non-conventional theories of law that eventually served as the basis for critical studies at the undergraduate level today, like critical gender studies, critical fat studies, post-colonial theory, and so on. Lastly, I served 22 years in the military, mostly as an expert in non-conventional warfare, which required the study of the theory behind insurgency, communist revolutionary conflict, and what is also known as political conflict or warfare, and communist indoctrination, like self-reflection sessions, et cetera. So I'm presenting this resolution tonight with some degree of education and experience in the subject matter. So when I saw the slide with individualism on one side and collectivism on the other, and the proclamation that it's not a good-bad binary, and then a list of countries that we apparently should be more like, alarms went off in my head. First, these are isms. So we're not talking about individuality, a combination of personality and character traits that make us all unique, nor are we talking about community. Both individualism and collectivism are specific to political theory and philosophy. So I had some definitions, because we had, I have had with several members individually, some discrepancy about what collectivism means. So I'm going to read from Merriam-Webster. "Collectivism: A political or economic theory advocating collective control over production and distribution in a nation." Collins English Dictionary. "The political belief that a country's industries and services should be owned and controlled by the state or by all people in the country. Socialism and communism are both forms of collectivism." Cambridge Dictionary. "A theory or political system based on the principle that all the farm, factories, and other places of work in a country should be owned by all or for the people in that country." So when I saw the equity specialist slide with this continuum on it, and I have to say that, after considering that continuum, and in the context of the balance of her presentation, I am convinced, and there's been some talk about, you know, the equity specialist and that kind of thing, but that she probably didn't understand the definition of collectivism, and was looking at this in the terms of community. And just being fair to her, and I say this for two reasons. First, she was only recently appointed to the position of equity specialist, and her background is as a math teacher. And second, Ms. Bennet had asked the superintendent to provide the books that she was using in the preparation for her training, and we did get those, and thank you for that. There's an entire chapter dedicated to both collectivism and individualism in here. But funny enough, the two words are not in the index, nor are they in the glossary. So I'm assuming that she probably didn't realize that these are highly political terms. I don't know why it's not in there, but I got my suspicions. So in collectivism, the individual is subservient to the people. A collective is, in theory, the entire population. For example, in communist ideology, it's, quote, "the masses." But the masses, when they do not like what the individual is doing, plans to do or is not doing, they don't, for example, show up at the individual's location and protest. Rather, they send their representatives, that is, the government, local, regional, or national, that represents, quote, "the masses," and the collective, and the police who enforce the collectivist will. So in reality, collectivist society, the individual is subservient to the government. Collectivism is near synonymous with socialism. "From each according to his ability and to each according to his needs. Each has its centerpiece theory, the redistribution of wealth and resources." Individualism, on the other hand, is another political term. "A theory maintaining the political and economic independence of the individual." Or, from Britannica, "political or social philosophy that emphasizes the moral worth of the individual." So if nothing else, by now...
Mark, I'm not going to cut you off, but we are there.
If nothing else, we should be able to agree that these two concepts are specific to political philosophy and only in, used only in political spheres. So how do collectivism-socialism tie into social justice? Like I said, it's an amalgam of critical theories. Critical because they literally criticize and seek to change the status quo, the legal system, political system, and social system. According to Professor Jonathan Turley, who is a professor of law at George Washington, "critical theory's most direct philosophical antecedent is critical Marxism. There's no way around it." Cultural Marxism, it's also called, defines identity groups to create a revolutionary consciousness in the society, ultimately to move towards socialism-communism. So in conclusion, the government-collective distribution of wealth and other resources within a nation or society, whether through increased taxation, legislation, or other measures, is both inherently political and forms the basic motivation behind all political activity. Hence, social justice activism is politically motivated, and its theories are inherently collectivist-socialist. Thus, its promotion in our classrooms and its implication in our students amounts to political activism, if not indoctrination. As such, it has no place in Queen Anne's County Public Schools, and I urge each of you to vote in favor of this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'm just going to go. Helen, you seconded. Do you have any comments?
Well, I do. I mean, I agree with not so many words as Mark, but in what he was saying. I think that we have, and I don't have the law degree, I think I just have a good sense of what feels right and wrong, and doing a lot of my own research about this, is I think that we sometimes make light of what some of these terms mean. And it's actually really fluid. I mean, I've asked people, the first time, a little bit of my background, this is the first time ever in my life that I was called a racist, was by the former superintendent, who stood here in open forum and called me racist, knowing nothing about my mixed racial family. And then, and I've asked people, well, what do you think racist is? People don't even know what racist is. They, and I've just come to the conclusion that what it means now when they call me that is, I don't agree with them. And so these terms, and even Merriam, I was reading about some of the terminologies, are so fluid. You can't make a stand on sand. You have to have a foundation, and it's ironic, because the reason why we haven't even our laws, and the fact that our constitution says, Maryland's constitution, that we, the people of the state of Maryland, grateful to Almighty God for our civil and religious liberty, so I should have the right to be free, the rights of life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness? And under the guise of calling me names and shutting us down, we're losing a lot of this. So I'm kind of going off, but collectivism, it's true. I mean, even a little bit right here when they say, well, if you do your homework, great, if you don't do your homework, great. There's no, I mean, we, the participation trophies, the, everyone should feel good. We all should have the opportunity, the same opportunity. And really, I think that socioeconomic is a bigger barrier than some of our other things. I mean, I've been poor, I've been homeless, and I'm certainly not considered a minority. I've been broke, I've been poor, I have no skills until I decided to do something with my life. So when you put yourself out there as a victim, and that your stuff should be my stuff, and what I do, you know, I should have the same outcome, that is not what we are about. You need to work hard, you need to have pride in what you're doing, you need to have purpose. I mean, we were built that way. So even though I don't have the law stuff behind it, I think we're doing a disservice to all of our students when we lower the bar so that we all feel good about ourselves, or when they say, well, Helen, you worked really hard, so I'm going to take some of your money and give it to somebody else. Yeah, they didn't work hard, but you know, they had a really hard life. We're doing a disservice. Everyone has the opportunity, the same opportunities in America and in Queen Anne's County. Best place I've ever lived is in Queen Anne's County. And I've lived in Arlington, one of the most liberal cities. I've lived a lot of places, because I also was in the military. We need to, everyone, to be able to do the best that they can, and that comes from individualism, and that's guaranteed in our constitution. The right of liberty, pursuit of happiness, and to keep my stuff that belongs to me. And it's a wonderful resolution. It says it's committed to promoting the worth and dignity of all individuals. Regardless, we're not going to tolerate or condone any act of bias or discrimination based on anything. I think it's a wonderful way to start this resolution. We're just saying that we're not about collectivism. Community is different. Community is different. We come together as a community, but that's not collectivism versus individualism. So I, that's why I seconded the resolution.
Thank you. Other board members?
Yes. The purpose of this board is to support the superintendent's job to educate the students of Queen Anne's County. This resolution does not do that. This resolution, while you say, is trying to keep politics out of our schools, this is a very political resolution. You had an issue with a presentation that's being given to teachers. This board should address that presentation and throw this out, because this does not do what we want it to do. And as a point of reference, everybody does not have the same opportunities. There are people that work, some of our administrative staff, some of our, I'm getting a little emotional, because this is really...
A little hard stuff.
Take your time.
Our janitors, they work sometimes three times as hard as I do. They don't have the same opportunity that I have. Everything that I have, I got because I worked for it, and I've paid for all of my education, and I worked for that, but not everybody has that same opportunity. I'm very, we are very slighted by the life that we lead. I was one of the people that sent a message to President Smith about how I did not support this. I don't want to be associated with it, and I don't think it's right for this county, for our students. And one of the reasons I gave is very simple. When my child was in school a couple of years ago, and we went on virtual, I had no flippin' idea that half the people in the North County didn't have internet access. I just assumed everybody did. I didn't realize that we have parents sitting in parking lots for hours on end so that their children could connect with their laptops that we gave them to do their homework. That's not everybody having the same opportunity. Whether it's because of the location, if Verizon doesn't reach there, or they didn't have the money to pay for it, it's not the same. We are not the same. I'm working on this board to try and make it the same, to try to give everybody the same opportunity, but they don't have it, and for us to blindly say that they do, and just, you just have to work together. Sometimes you have to be together. It takes a village, and I am rightfully believe, I work over the bridge. I drive an hour, sometimes two hours, every day to go to work. My child was here, she had a babysitter. I am the most luckiest person on the planet, because that babysitter took care of her. I live in a neighborhood that I could call, I'm stuck in traffic, I can't get over the bridge. My babysitter closes, can somebody go get my kid? Somebody would. They'd pick her up, they'd give her dinner, and that's how we lived. On this side of the bridge, I had to go over it. That's not the same opportunity. Not everybody has that. And we cannot, this is wrong. It's very political. It is very political. It is not, and that's not what we're here for. We are a board that is here to take care of the children of Queen Anne's County. This does not do it.
Thank you.
I'm done.
Ms. Harper?
I can agree to some of the components that are in this resolution. The Maryland article about the love of freedom and democracy, how we should allow our children to have the rights to make up their own minds about things, how we should teach them both sides of the coin of a debate. But in its entirety, I cannot support this resolution, as it is too political and has no place here.
I ran for office, too, and not on any one issue. I ran what I thought I could do best for Queen Anne's County and the students of this county, and we have a good county. I agree with some things that make common sense in that. I have no problem with some of that. But the overall resolution and what is presented to me, to me, is not needed here in Queen Anne's County. I don't see that. As far as the presentation, it was done to some teachers at that time, that was brought up. I've had it on the agenda twice, asked board members to send Dr. Salins questions. I think, Mark, you and I talked to her at one time on that issue. And I don't think, to this point, I'm not going to speak for Dr. Salins, has received those questions, if there was more to it than what somebody thinks. And if there's a problem there, I'm willing to address it. But that's through Dr. Salins, because it's a staff issue, if there's an issue there. It will be on the agenda, hopefully. People will get back to Dr. Salins and be on the agenda for next regular scheduled meeting, so she can have the proper staff. And what to answer these questions, and not somebody that's not aware of it. And a lot of times, how things are presented, you know, can either sound good or be taken the wrong way. And I don't think, I think your ideas are well-me... And I don't think, I think your ideas are well-meaning. I just can't agree with this present resolution, the way it's set out. And that's my opinion. But I would like to, before we go back, Dr. Salins, I think your input on this as superintendent of Queen Anne's County Public Schools needs to be heard too, as far as opinion on that.
Sure. First of all, I think that we need to understand what's the purpose of a resolution, which really is to either remove or insert something that we already have in place. And so my first question, I think the board should be interested in is how is this either removing or inserting something into a current policy? So, or where we have existing curriculum that is missing something or has something that needs to be removed? So that would be the first thing that kind of is a red flag for me. I do think that too, and I could go literally statement by statement, I don't know that we need to do that, but I do think that several of the information that has been pulled out has been pulled out in an effort to take things out of context and not understand how, educationally speaking, we are using given terms such as individualism and collectivism. The continuum on the back page specifically, I've never heard of freedom continuum before. I don't know where that term came from, and I see no reference here. And the whole concept of some of the things that are stated in this resolution really are things that as a community we should be doing. So there should be a complete stakeholders buy-in to some of the things. When you start talking about things that people are committed to and value, those are all things that come through the process of strategic planning. And that's where you go to your community and you really involve all your stakeholders and arbitrarily making a decision for your community about what they value, I think is a dangerous step for the board. I really do. There's several statements in here that really are pure opinion, and I think that that should never be involved in a resolution. I think that in education, we value evidence-based materials. We are expected to use evidence-based materials in every decision that we make, in every classroom that we're in, as we're implementing things. And I don't see that these are evidence-based things. And really, some of them, I agree with Ms. Harper, that some of these things are good things and we currently have them in our discrimination and equity policies. And we should be supporting them and continue to do that. And why we would need to restate them when we already have them in current policy would be my question to the board. Some of these, I would ask, where are their specific examples or how are these things being neglected in the classroom or not, you know, or how are rights being infringed upon? I would want specific examples of these things to prove that we are doing that so that we can address it. And I think it would be addressed in a different manner with staff development and things like that and not necessarily through a resolution. I do want to bring the board back to, I think, a point that's really important, which is the educational equity in Maryland and the policy there, which is 13A dot oh one dot oh six dot oh four. And that equity policy is by law that this board has to look at everything that comes across your decision-making is done through an equity lens. And that equity lens is articulated nicely through me. We don't have a choice. This is what we have to do. We have to use an equity lens with everything. So I asked the board before they make this decision tonight to use these equity lens questions as it relates to this resolution, so whether they feel that this is in the best interest of our students. And I would say that it's not in the best interest of our students nor our community.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Now, everybody's had a chance to think. Mark, it's his resolution, he will address it at last. Does any other member have any input to this resolution at this time?
I do.
Okay.
Because I obviously touched a nerve with Ms. Bent, and that's not my intention. I didn't say that right now, as we speak with nothing going on, that everyone has the same opportunity. That's what I'm striving to give by being on the board. When we talk about that we, I mean, an inordinate amount of money is spent on a lot of our children to try to give them every opportunity. You know, we want to help our special education, we want to help our English section learners. The whole point, yes, that I'm on, one of the big points of me being on this board is to give everybody the opportunity. That is not at all what I said, that we are all at the same spot. We want to give everybody equal opportunity. That is absolutely 100% in my brain. What I'm saying that we don't always have is 100% equal outcome because really, it's kind of based on what you put into it. I mean, if I have two people in high school, we both have totally different experiences. If I'm on the board, you know, the student board member and I get involved in band and I get involved in sport thing, I'm going to have a totally different high school outcome than somebody who skips school half the time. But the opportunity was there and I want everyone to have equal opportunity, absolutely 100%. So I want to be clear about that because we all don't. I worked hard as well. But when we talk about village and community, it does take a village, it does take a community, and that's what Queen Anne's County gives. I have never lived somewhere in my, in my years where a community came together so well. I'm absolutely about village and community. What I was saying I was not about was collectivism. And I think that resonates in Queen Anne's County, which is that whatever I want to give free, like I resent when the commissioners give my money to a charity. I will decide what charity gets my money. But that's, but they do part of that. So, you know, I don't, I don't like that because I am all about the village and community and we come together. You won't find a business or a neighborhood that when someone asks, they just don't give and give abundantly. But that's not the same thing. As Mark said, it's not collectivism. We need community, we need the village, and this community in Queen Anne's County is all about that. And I guess I'm thinking, this didn't look political to me, but that collectivism versus individualism and just teaching. And you know, and I've heard examples, and I don't want to say the specific examples, I will give them to Dr. Salins because it doesn't feel good when I don't have, you know, names and dates and stuff, but I've heard a lot of stuff that, on the flip side, that there's not a lot of freedom for all, that there are biases and there's biases all over the place. And we have to be careful, like Dr. Salins was saying, that we don't have any of that on any side. And I think we're just, we're trying to draw our community together. I want to draw our community together. So I was thinking that, and we certainly can tweak it, but I, I was, I want to be really clear about that. I want to give everybody equal opportunity. I just don't know that we always have the same outcomes. And that should, then that's kind of okay. All right, I'm done.
Okay. Does any other members have anything to? Hey, Mark, do you want to conclude your...
Sure.
...station on your resolution?
So, Ms. Bent, Dr. Salins, and Mr. Smith, when I was listening to your comments, you've confused this with equity. I haven't mentioned equity in this resolution or in my narrative. I'm not talking about giving our school kids, you know, one resource less or whatever. We put resources where we need them. And I recall talking to the English Language Arts Director during one meeting and she was talking about equity. And I said, well, if you have a child who needs extra work or extra attention, you know, what do you do? And she said, well, we give that child, you know, the attention that she needs. And it was under the conversation of equity. And I said, well, isn't that what teachers do anyway? And she said, well, that's what equity is. And we've been doing this, she said, for decades before it was even called equity. So we're not talking about equity. This is something a little more deeper. Now, we just had a slide from Ms. Hudak up on the board at the beginning of this meeting that referenced racial justice. So racial justice is a little different from equity. And racial justice comes from critical legal studies, from critical race theory. There's justice and there's injustice. Justice is for the courts to decide, injustice is for the courts to address. There's no, in my opinion, and we'll explain this in the next resolution afterwards, but so this is in the school system. And now, we are in Queen Anne's County, and I've been here for a year and I've been very happy. I've got some concerns from parents and from teachers. But when I did see that our professional development, and that's your realm, I'm not saying we need to change the professional development, although I would recommend and I did recommend to you, and we did sit down and discuss this. We didn't come to a total resolution for whatever reason, but we did try to work this So this is not about equity. You know, these terms come from something a lot deeper, they're a lot more damaging in the end, and we'll talk about that in the next resolution. And it's not a political, I'm trying to get this, it is, this social justice is political when you look at it. If you want to take the time to read up on it and everything else, I encourage you to do so, maybe you'll have a change of heart. And as such, it doesn't belong in our schools in Queen Anne's County. So we're not talking about equity or, you know, depriving one group from North County or even a racial group or whatever. Everybody needs to get the resources that they need, and we go through this in the budget all the time. And I know the teachers are doing the right thing too, the principals. So we're talking a little something different here. Maybe you didn't get it, but that's okay. So I've done my due diligence. I see this is going on and it's in other parts of the state. I see the activism that the Maryland State Education Association is trying to promote with social justice. It's political, it's at its foundation, doesn't need to be in our classrooms. We are not exactly a non-political body. We are elected officials. And so it was my true intent to bring this up. I felt it necessary to do. My conscience is clear and we can move on. Take a vote.
Okay. Mark would be the last one to speak. We will take a vote and I'll call from right to left. Helen, I'm sorry, I mean...
No, it's all right because they probably, anyway, it's...
I'm going to call this...
Yes.
Can we say what the motion is, please?
Motion, I'm sorry, it's a resolution, Mark, it's just read.
It's a motion to adopt the resolution. Motion to adopt the resolution titled Social Justice Education.
Mark read, and I think everybody has sent at least, I saw it two hours ago, in the final draft. Okay, I'm sorry.
Excuse me, would you have Ms. Dennis do the roll call?
I, I just, I'm going to do it this time. Helen?
I already spoke.
Yes. I'm sorry, Helen says yes.
Mark? Yes.
Mark says yes, Smith says no.
Harper says no.
Bent says no.
It fails for lack of majority.
Mr. President, I would move to adopt the resolution that I presented to you before this meeting and to the other board members. Critical race theory in Queen Anne's County Public Schools.
You want to make this resolution? You want this resolution to be...
That's a motion to adopt the resolution titled Critical Race Theory in Queen Anne's County Schools that was promoted or provided to you and the board members prior to this meeting. There were three drafts. One was two weeks ago, another 10 days ago, and one today. So the one today.
So point of order, Mr. Smith and Mr. Schifinelli needs to make the motion, Tom needs to second it in order to have conversation.
You got to give me time.
Got to get there first.
You got to give me time.
Okay.
I got plenty of time. Okay, we have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Back up.
I have a motion and a second. Mr. Schifinelli, please go on.
Whereas the Board of Education of Queen Anne's County Public Schools is committed to promoting the worth and dignity of all individuals, and the board will not tolerate or condone any act of bias, discrimination, insensitivity, or disrespect toward any person on the basis of race, ethnicity, color, age, religion, disability, genetics, ancestry, or national origin, marital status, sex, or sexual orientation, socioeconomic status, or other legally or constitutionally protected attributes or affiliations. Whereas, in accordance with Section 105 of the Maryland Education Article, the Board of Education is obligated to instill in our students, quote, "the love of freedom and democracy shown in the devotion of all true and patriotic Americans to their flag and country." And whereas, critical race theory seeks to portray the United States, Americans, and nearly every legal and social institution as, quote, "systemically racist," including law enforcement, law and the legal system, the Constitution, marriage and the nuclear family, the education system, and any socioeconomic principles not in conformity with Marxist socialism or neo-Marxist critical theories. Whereas, critical race theory seeks to impute blame for social disparities of classifying individuals according to their ancestry, race, sex, national origin, or ethnicity, and further identifying them as, quote, "privileged members of an oppressor group or as victims and members of an oppressed group or groups." Whereas, philosophical and theoretical concepts that impugn fault, blame, a tendency to oppress others, membership in an alleged oppressor or privileged, quote, "identity group," or a tendency to be oppressed and a victim by membership in an alleged oppressed or victim, quote, "identity group," or the need to feel guilt, anguish, fear, or entitlement solely on the basis of one's race or ethnicity, or inherently divisive and not only violate the premises of individual merit, individual rights, and equal opportunity that are the genuine founding principles of the United States and Maryland, when integrated into public schools in any degree, are contrary to the U.S. Constitution and the Maryland Declaration of Rights and therefore have no place in Queen Anne's County Public Schools. And whereas, respect for the liberties of students and teachers, the views of a politically and socially diverse citizenry, and the ideal of a politically neutral public education requires that the promotion of the tenants of such philosophical or theoretical concepts that attempt to classify individuals as part of an oppressor or oppressor class based on their race, or oppressed class based on their race, ethnicity, or socioeconomic status, whether as part of the Queen Anne's County Public Schools or individual activism, have no place in our public school system. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education of Queen Anne's County believes the United States of America is not a racist nor systemically racist country, that the state of Maryland is not a racist state, and that Queen Anne's County is not a racist county, recognizes that slavery and racism are betrayals of the founding principles of the United States, and specifically the values inherent in individual freedom, equality, justice, humanity, and that individuals living today are not to be punished, discriminated against, or made to feel, quote, "guilty" because of past actions committed by members of the same race or ethnicity, or conversely, taught to believe that they are victims as a result of these founding principles of the United States. Three, affirms that we will continue making decisions affecting K through 12 public education based on the best interests of all students regardless of their race or heritage, and that our focus remains that of providing the highest quality education to every child in Queen Anne's County, and that no child shall be determined or considered to be an oppressor or one systematically oppressed. Affirms that education in Queen Anne's County should reflect our fundamental values as a county, those of our state and of our nation, that is, individual freedom, equality, and the potential inherent in every individual regardless of their social identity. Affirms that we will not support or impart any K through 12 education resources or standards intended to promote or impart critical race theory or its tenants to our students. Believes that county school administrators, teachers, staff members, and all employees should not, shall not impart any of the following concepts: that one race or ethnicity is inherently superior to another race or ethnicity; that an individual by virtue of his or her race, ethnicity, or socioeconomic status is consciously or unconsciously racist, privileged, or an oppressor; that an individual by virtue of his or her race or ethnicity is de facto oppressed; that an individual's moral standing or worth is necessarily determined by his or her race or ethnicity; that an individual by virtue of his or her race or ethnicity bears responsibility for actions committed in the past by other members of the same race; that an individual should feel discomfort, guilt, anguish, or any other kind of form of emotional distress because of his or her race or ethnicity; that meritocracy or traits such as self-reliance and hard work are racist or were created by members of a particular race or ethnicity to oppress members of another race or ethnicity; that fault, blame, or bias should not be assigned to a race or to members of a race because of their race; that the United States is systematically, I back up, that fault, blame, or bias should be assigned to a race or to members of a race because of their race. And these are negatives. That the United States is a systematically racist country and its institutions tools of racist suppression; that the advent of slavery in the territory that is now the United States constituted the true founding of the United States. These things should not be implicated. Number seven, asks that the superintendent task the appropriate policy committee to create a policy via the policy, policy that we have. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, that's the resolution. You want to speak to it?
Okay, so I'm not going to reiterate my reasons for these motions, I've already done that, but I will say two things about critical race theory. First, it became, again, it's a prodigy of critical Marxism, and it came about in the 1980s as part of the critical race in law studies that I mentioned earlier. Yeah, customarily, and this kind of goes along with what Helen was saying earlier, when new legal or social political theories are presented in academia, like CRT, there's rigorous debate in intellectual circles, academia, and arguments are often presented as papers published in legal journals, philosophy journals, sociology journals, et cetera. In that context, in the 1980s, these new critical theories, including critical race, were at first welcomed as fresh ideas, that is, until their novel theories and arguments began to be examined and rebutted. The salient complaints were that these critical theorists often wrote from subjective, not objective viewpoints. They inserted their own personal experiences as premises to what they thought were universal conclusions of modern jurisprudence. Those who criticized critical theorists called this, quote, "narrative justice," jurisprudence. And for many, they revealed other deficiencies, a tendency to evade or suppress complications that render their conclusions problematic, and that's an end quote, and that's a quote from Jonathan Turley, the professor of GW now. Instead of engaging in introspection and reforming or conforming their theories, critical supporters attacked opponents as bigots, racists, or hostile to black or female legal scholars. One of the first victims of this ad hominem assault was law professor Mark Tushnet in the 80s, who was attacked after he tried to rebut an African-American scholar, Patricia Williams, her critical race argument. He was publicly labeled as a racist, misogynist, and that as a white male and a Jew, he had no standing to criticize Williams, an African-American female. This was the beginning of what we call today cancel culture, and in many professors, and many professors, academics, and scholars were the first ones to feel its spite, many losing not only their reputations but also their jobs. So the, the point is that when critical race was coming out and these other critical theories, the result was a lot of people that would have challenged them capitulated, and unfortunately, critical race theory never got its due justice. It was never rigorously or intellectually challenged, and the end result was that whereas critical race could have formed into something more coherent, less contradictory, and the other quotes, full of complications, had it engaged in that academic rigor. Unfortunately, it didn't. It continued to expand and morph, it went into the undergraduate schools, and so today we see responses from Freedom of Information Act requests, for example, from Montgomery County, that have race pyramids, and like the Republican platform of Make America Great Again is considered racist. If you're a black conservative, you're considered a, quote, "self-appointed white ally." Now, these are really nasty terms, but this is the argument ad hominem, and at least kids in other counties are being taught these things. So I, just like I mentioned before, we just saw a slide that had racial justice on it from one of the classrooms. Racial justice is a tenet of critical race theory. I believe that it's not a huge problem, but it could be a problem in the school, and this is the reason why I'm moving for this resolution at this point. And that's all I've got to say.
I'm gonna take this a little different this time, only because you said in other counties, not necessarily, I mean, I understand there's a lot of things going on in this world, in other counties, other states, and in the whole, throughout the United States. Have you seen this in our county?
Yes, I've seen a promotion of this in our county. If you want me to be specific, I'm not sure I want to, because the last time I did, some people were visited unwelcome.
No, I don't, I don't need that, but you, that's your opinion.
I just mentioned that critical justice, in Ms. Hudak's slide, it's, it's right there. And I've already discussed what critical justice is, what justice is, as well. So, okay, resounding yes.
Helen?
I agree with the resolution, and at the, you know, and it's a shame that I feel apprehensive about even giving my opinion, because I think all of our intentions are good, and people are, I want everybody to succeed, I want every student in our school district to succeed, I want to give them every opportunity, and I don't want anyone to feel uncomfortable. And the thing is, I think that all of us, and putting it out here now, I know when Dr. Salins was saying you're either trying to, like, put something in that's not there or repeal something, sometimes we just are preemptive, just like you guys put together the virtual plan. I mean, sometimes it's just best to be prepared for something before we're actually faced with it, but that's all I got to say.
Tammy or Shannon?
I stand by my previous comments. I don't believe that this is necessary. Once again, if we think that we are having a problem with our education, instruction, our teachers, then we help Dr. Salins address it. This is too far-reaching.
So I, I, there are some points in here, I understand them, I respect the time that it took to put this all together, and the resolution number three and four, absolutely. I, decisions, making decisions based affecting K-12 public school education, yes. Our mission statement, the mission of Queen Anne's County Public Schools, a high-performing public school system, is to ensure that every student demonstrates a commitment to high achievement and everyday excellence, possessing the skills and knowledge to empower them to thrive and continue to grow intellectually, physically, emotionally, and socially in a rapidly changing, globally competitive society. This will be accomplished through a partnership with our families and community, a world-class curriculum, excellence in teaching, and challenging educational experiences. The vision of Queen Anne's County is for our graduates to be well-educated, globally competitive, and prepared to become a caring, productive citizen of the 21st century. Core values of Queen Anne's County Public Schools: focus on results and creating value, managing for innovation, learning-centered education, system perspective, visionary leadership, agility, organizational and personal learning, valuing faculty, staff, and students, management by fact, and social responsibility. Queen Anne's County Public Schools' nondiscrimination statement: in accordance with state law, state and federal laws, and the policies of the Board of Education, Queen Anne's County Public Schools do not discriminate on the basis of race, ethnicity, color, age, religion, disability, genetics, ancestry, national origin, marital status, sex, or sexual orientation in matters affecting employment or in providing educational programs and service, and provides equal access to the Boy Scouts of America and other designated youth groups. Queen Anne's County Public Schools operates equal opportunity and affirmative action programs for students and staff. Board of Education of Queen Anne's County Public Schools is an equal opportunity and affirmative action employer. If we had had trouble with this, I really wish that the members had come forward and tried to incorporate all this in our mission statement rather than proposing this. Thank you.
I have not seen that in Queen Anne's County, this critical race theory being taught. Has it been brought up, maybe discussed as far as in education? I'm not there, so I can't answer that question. It shouldn't be in here. I don't think it's here. I will ask Dr. Salins if it is, but as far as knowledgeable in saying a few words, which I know some words set people off, and other words mean different things to different people. But I, at this time, do not, I see this as overreaching, and I, I understand the world, not I don't understand the world, I understand where a lot of this stuff's come from, it's, I'm not saying you, Mark, but a lot of this is politically driven by certain groups, and that concerns me a lot. But I would like to ask Dr. Salins to speak on this, but as far as the fact that teaching critical race theory, that is not our mission in Queen Anne's County.
It is not our mission in Queen Anne's County.
Okay, any who'd like to?
Sure, I would like to elaborate a little bit. Again, going back, and some of the statements will be the same, but I feel the need to address them. The first whereas is really already in our nondiscrimination and equity policy, and why we would put this in some type of resolution when it's already per policy, it would be a concern or just a question for me. Whereas, the second one for 7-105, this statement is not all-inclusive of the actual co-mor regulation, and so when you cherry pick something out and just isolate one piece of it, you're not really doing the full intent of the law, and it becomes misleading. This actual 7-105 refers to representation of a flag in every building, representation of saying the Pledge of Allegiance. I think that it also includes, where it allows people to actually exempt themselves from that. And so when you look at the whole thing as a whole, I think it's misrepresented in this resolution, and I would say that if you're gonna put something in a resolution, you would need to create everything. And that kind of brings me back to the whole definition and the defining factors of collectivism in the presentation, or whatever, I'm not sure what you called those, evidence or something.
No.
What?
Not evidence.
Whatever, you, I don't know what you called it, but anyways, a legal term you used. So in this collectivism, this really, this definition is really not applicable to education. This is applicable to the theory piece of this, and this supports the political aspect. And again, this definition, if you go to the dictionary, this is actually the second choice of the definitions that are there, because it highlights the political and theory piece of it, which does not apply to education. So if you, again, include the whole picture of things, you would see all sides in that how this could be applicable to education, when you're understanding the term of collectivism and understanding that how we use it in education is to be able to understand where someone else is coming from so that we culturally can understand what they bring to the table. And so when we have students who are coming to us from all over the world, they, they come to us on this continuum of individualism and collectivism in their culture and community. We can't change that, that's where they come from, they come with that, to us, and that it's our expectation for our teachers to be able to understand that their cultures are all different. And so if they're coming from a collectivism type of environment, how is that different from coming to our dominant individualism ways that we think and the things that we do here in our community? So building an awareness of what collectivism is, is not teaching collectivism and promoting collectivism within our community. And so I think that things are being presented in a manner that they're actually supporting a political division as opposed to the educational aspect of why we need to understand what that is. As it relates to the third and the fourth one, I go back to evidence-based, I see no evidence-based in education, that's number one that we have to do. Five, again, I would ask for specific examples of how this is currently being neglected, or how it's being infringed upon, so that, again, if that is happening, then we need to understand that, I certainly need to know that, so I can go and remedy that situation and educate and provide support for teachers in that situation. But six is very concerning, six really, even though here it doesn't use the word institutional neutrality, it is that, it's just in your own words. And I personally believe that inserting an institutional position that's claiming a bias, that that puts us as a district in a position of opposition with our own organization. And so then you start bringing in, you create union issues and contractual problems, you create a division in your, not only in your school system, but your school system is your community. So then you start to put a division in your community. As we move to the next page, again, the subjectivity of number one, I believe that's opinion. If we certainly want to adopt that we are anti-racism, that is a value that I can support, but in the context of which it's in here, I cannot. Three, well, two is actually, you know, revisionist history, really. It's going and changing history, and I can't support that. Three, basically, yes, I agree with that. You say that you want us to affirm to continue making decisions, and I wholeheartedly believe that until we get to the very last statement, and that no child shall determine and, or be considered to be oppressor. I think that just is redundant in nature. And as we move through, I ask that, and four, how do we rewrite our values in a single resolution? I have concerns about that, that that's even our place right now, as I said, going back to strategic planning, bringing in all of your stakeholders to rewrite, you know, your values of, as a, as a, as a school district. Five, where does this exist now? Is there a list? So that's something that I would, I would ask. If we're going to say critical race theory, what other theories do we need to list out? Are there other theories that we need to address and talk about, or is it just this one? And so I would want to see what kind of list maybe there was. As we get down into six, again, these are all things that are, most of them in our discrimination and equity policy. I do have concerns with, with F, that an individual should feel discomfort, guilt, anguish, and I say, how do you measure that? How do you measure a feeling of a student? And I have to say that I feel that in education, we're not emotionless, we're people, we have emotions, and that we can't measure that level of emotion. Overall, I just, I cannot support it, I would advise the board not to support it, I think this is a very boilerplate attempt to intentionally disrupt the activities that we are charged to do here as educators. So I cannot support it, and would recommend that the board not support it.
That's, that's Dr. Salins' thing, it will still be a vote by the board, which way it goes. Mark, you have the final.
Actually, I just have one more comment.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
No, 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 it's okay, because I really believe all of our intentions are good. I mean, I have very much valued that we've been able to have just a discussion. So I guess I do take exception with the boilerplate intention to disrupt our educational system, that is not at all, I think what we're doing, I think we brought this forward because, or we didn't, and I should have corrected Ms. Harper, too, we didn't bring it. Mark brought it, and I seconded it because I felt it had some value, and I still think that it has some value, but I've respected everybody's opinion, but I absolutely do not have any intentions to disrupt anything. My intentions are always, like all of us here on the board, is to do what we think is the right thing, and that's why we come and we have these discussions, and, and, you know, we make decisions, and so that felt a little disrespectful, because that's not at all the truth of intentionally disrupting anything. That would not be my intention.
Yeah, thank you.
You know, I don't think anybody's intentionally or hopefully personally making a problem. I mean, we're all here, we ran and took an oath to support the school system and the students of Queen Anne's County. I think what we have is a pretty solid, hard difference of opinion on some of the way things are said and done. So I don't hope everybody's got thick enough skin that they don't take it personally. We need to do this as a group, and that's how we're gonna resolve this, and after Mark finishes his, he has last say. Any last, any other board members want to put into it?
Mark, you got the floor. Sure. So first with Ms. Harper and Dr. Salins, you're looking at these whereas statements in both of these motions. These are, in other words, they're facts. Whereas, the Board of Education does have these policies, and the state law says this or that. So that's not really what the part of the, what we intend to do part of this. So it's just a preamble, right? You get it? So there's a lot of things in there, you know, why do we have to do this again? It's a whereas, and you know, this is where the school already is. And then the second part of these motions is, where do we want to go, or where I'm proposing we would go? So a little bit of confusion there, but as far as Mr. Smith, you know, you're, in fact, you said that this was politically driven, I'm not sure what you mean. My background is in this, like I explained, and my heart's in this as well. It has nothing to do with my political, you know, agenda, whatever, I'm here for the next three years, and I got here because of what I saw was going on. Dr. Salins, you talked, you brought up collectivism again regarding this. We've had this discussion before, I've told you that, you know, my own kids brought home work from school, one of which I recall specifically said, it was a, like a study guide, it said the rights of the community outweigh the individual. So I don't know how that means, you know... So, I don't know how that means, you know, or how that turns into something cross-cultural. Most of those countries on that list, that last 12 countries, I've lived in probably seven of them for six months to a year, lived and worked in this. So, I'm not sure what collectivism we're talking about here. Now, community, okay, I get it. And all those countries like Guatemala, they're all diverse in communities. But collectivism is collectivism and individualism is individualism. And even the Equity Specialist Guidebook didn't even give a definition of them one way or the other, saying it's, you know, something we use in teaching or whatever. These are political terms. But last thing. Mr. Smith, you asked again, are we teaching CRT in schools? No, we're not teaching critical race theory. Nobody's ever said that we are. We're teaching the tenets of critical race theory and it's being injected, like we just saw on the slide, into the, into the classrooms. And that's where my concern is. You can have your professional development and all that, but when I start seeing the effects of that professional development ending up in the classroom, then I've, I've got a problem with that. I've got an issue with it. And, you know, this is obviously a nationwide issue. It's been going on for a long time. Maybe not a long time, we might have been on top of it before. But I want to stay on top of it. And I don't want critical race theory. It's divisive, like I've already said, and it's false. In fact, I take issue saying that I misrepresented something here because the United States was not, it seems like your contention, founded on principles without slavery or was founded on slavery as its principle. I think that's coming from 1619 Project, which has been debunked. If you, and I'll just wrap with this. If you go look at the speeches that the founding fathers gave at the Constitutional Conventions in 1787, before it was ratified in 1789, you'll see that these guys were having conflict, emotional, intellectual conflict with their hypocrisy. Take a look at those speeches if you haven't. They, it was not lost on them that they were fighting for equality, individualism, freedom, while we had slavery as an institution here. In fact, some of those men released their slaves during those meetings, turned them free. State of Pennsylvania in 1778, 10 years before the Constitutional Convention outlawed slavery in Pennsylvania. That was two years into the Revolutionary War. Their legislature did that. It was a colony, it wasn't a state. So, you know, we can argue about that back and forth. But I don't appreciate it being called a misrepresentation of history. I know a little bit about history, so.
Okay, we've had the final thing, the Shelley's Resolution. We will now call it for a vote. Do the same thing, so there's no, I'm going to go the same way. Sorry, Helen?
That's all right, vote yes.
Yes. No?
Harper, no.
That, no.
The motion, or resolution fails for the lack of. Okay, we're gonna, we're ready for a break. We're going to take a 10-minute break while we resume at 8:00. I'm sorry, 9:20, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. It doesn't usually happen like this.
Is he next on the list?
Yes.
Only 10 minutes.
Take a break, please.
Thank you.